We'll get started.
Well, sir.
Okay, I want to welcome you all to the January 28th meeting of the Building and Ground Subcommittee. And tonight, we're going to discuss the property at the Marshall School. And Mike Patino, the CFO for the city, is going to give us reasons why we should turn the land over to the city. Michael.
Attendants?
Yes, thank you. Thank you, John. So I wanted to bring everybody up to speed on the-
We have to attend, it's sorry, I'm just sorry. We have to get-
Oh, attendants.
That's Mr. Castellano, yes, you're here, good. All right, we have perfect attendance, Ms. Cassianus.
Present.
Uh, Mr. Ford.
Present.
And Ms. Gately.
Present.
And Serbene is Mr. Nicholson, Mr. Saddlewhite, and Amy McGee. Cheers.
Michael?
Yes.
Go.
Present. Okay, um, I wanted to bring everybody up to speed on a couple of issues and ask for your consideration to declare the old Marshall Porter School surplus. Right now, we're in a situation where we had approximately $3 million set aside to raise that building. Over the course of the last several years, we've done a significant amount of testing. And it's been determined through the testing that we've done that the entire building is infested with asbestos. So the once $2 to $3 million estimate to raise that building is now in the $8 to $9 million range. So, right now, we've, um, in the process of receiving Department of Public Health, DEP, excuse me, DEP approval to raise a small portion of that building and then seal it up because we really don't want to be in a position to put another $3 or $4 million that we don't currently have or that we'd rather put to a better use. So what I've come to ask the committee is, if you declared it surplus, we would no longer have to use school budgetary money to keep that building safe. Right now, no police or fire can enter that building because you have to be in a hazmat suit because the ceilings, the walls, and the floor are all infested with asbestos. So, what I was talking, as I was talking with the mayor and a few other people, you know, we're going to be putting close to $3 to $4 million towards school projects in the next, hopefully, 15 to 45 days. You know, everybody is fully committed on our side to put money towards, you know, the new school for the study. We just put $700,000 towards the mobile classrooms in English. And we're probably going to have to throw, in addition to the savings that we talked about last month, that we're going to realize from not having children in the school and the money that the city's saving on the school buildings from utilities. We voted last month to put 5.5 million towards the new ventilation for the 10 schools. That project is moving forward. And it looks like the city's going to probably have to throw in an additional $1 million because there's some further items that need to be corrected with that ventilation project. So I just didn't think it was wise for us to appropriate $3 or $4 million to raise that building, if that would be enough. We'd rather repurpose that money into capital projects towards the school and let the committee put out an additional RFP, you know, when the council prepares itself to put that building out and to see what, you know, bids we could get, knowing what we know about it. Because it's going to change, obviously, what someone's going to pay us. And it's probably going to change, um, you know, our position. So we thought it would be wise to put the $3 to $4 million towards the school projects, you know, start on the new school. You know, hopefully, if from the MSBA next month, we're already into it for the accelerated project and kind of continue to move towards, you know, creating new 21st century space for the children of Lynn. So that's my pitch, but it's more about updating people on the facts because these were slow in coming because, you know, with COVID, it took a while to get the reports out. But when I heard the final numbers and we talked about it, we know no one's going to give us the type of money we wanted for that site based on the condition and what they're going to have to do to it.
I got one question. On May 2nd of 2019, we took a unanimous school committee vote to demolish that building. Why is it still there?
Well, first thing is, we didn't get approval from the Department of Environmental Protection yet. Because once it was determined, they took more samples. And additionally, when they took more samples, we didn't have enough money. The Rangers came back to $8 to $9 million to take that down.
Two years ago?
No, no, this, you voted to demolish it, but by the time the whole process got done, the estimates came back at $8 to $9 million. So the $3 million we had set aside was not enough money. I mean, we could take a vote on a lot of different things, but if we don't have the money to do the project, the contractor can't move forward. And we did not have DEP approval yet.
Ms. Gately? Then Mr. Castellano?
The asbestos, that was in the old building, right? Because there's two sections to that building. There was a new building where they had the brand-new library and everything in the old building. So the old building, the old part is what you're in discussion about, all the asbestos?
It's my understanding that the entire building is considered what they, a hot site. So that means there's, everything has to be carted out of there. It's not like you would knock down a normal building. Everything has to be carted out and put in containers and properly disposed of. They call it a hot site.
Wow.
Mr. Castellano?
And every time we put money, because it's still on the school side, you know, there's been fires there recently. Every time we send somebody over there, it comes out of the school budget because it's still in the school's possession.
Brian, Mr. Castellano?
Thank you, John. In the past, you know, we, you know, like Member Ford mentioned, you know, that was the, I understand that that was the original air market. Obviously, once they, it came back, there was more, you know, more cost there. But I think the big piece that the previous superintendent brought up was that the city, well, the school side, they were land poor. The city's land poor. We're already aware, you know, we're looking for space. And we're not saying that that space is going to be utilized for a school. But I think the plans, you know, we put together, you know, on our RFP, put out the bid, we're hoping to, you know, I guess, get away from the school budget. But what, that lot eventually is going to increase in value. That space is going to be very important. So I just don't know, you know, we're saying that the, you know, we have fire and the police, you know, not being able to go in without hazmat, so. And there have been fires. There was a big one that happened. What are the annual costs there? So we send the police and fire, oh, just to keep it there. How much are we looking at? Like, what's those numbers look like? And what other, I know in the past, we did have, when those proposals, bids went out, we saw like mixed use. I believe it was senior housing. I know Member Ford brought that up. We had, you know, there was, you know, there was some hope for what we were expected to be in those, in that space, but we wouldn't know until, I guess there's no guarantee on what goes there. So what does that look like?
Well, I believe, I believe it's, it was, the RFP went out for senior housing. The delay was that some of the bidders needed several years to raise the funds necessary. So, and the RFP was written that they only could have 60 or 90 days because we wanted it off the rolls. You know, right now, we're insuring that building as a vacant abandoned building, which is extremely costly. You know, there's some direct costs where we have to write checks. And then there's some other costs that are harder to put your finger on with response to fires and things of that nature that are just generally unsafe. But I guess what I'm getting at is, you know, we're going to be making a commitment for the schools. It just doesn't make financial sense to let this piece of property that needs more money than we have to continue to drain on the school budget.
I understand.
Mayor McGee?
Yeah, I'll speak a little bit to that as well. The reality is, when the first RFP went out, there was no, uh, no short-term proposals on the table. Several were long-term. He's been involved from the council side. The reality of the cost is substantially larger. And as the process went through and the building was prepared for demolition, the concrete, everything in that building has been built with asbestos. It's not just in the wall, it's in the floors. It's, so the reality is to take that building down and eliminate the asbestos is a substantial cost. And as it stays on the school side, as Mike was saying, those costs are borne by the schools. And the proposal here is to move it off the school rolls so that none of that money will come out of the schools. The city will still have to deal with the additional costs related to sealing up that building. And then at some point down the road, finding dollars to demolish it and then, you know, put a different RFP out related to what that site would look like. But the drag on the school budget will continue to be part of that if it stays in the schools' hands. And the dollars to take it down, as Mike said, is substantial. So we're taking down a small piece of the building, you know, the newer building that doesn't include, that doesn't have those kind of problems related to asbestos. But there's no ability right now, cost-wise, to take the other part of the building down and to clear a surplus and then have an ability with the council and the city to explore other options longer term to reclaim some dollars back from it, if possible. But the dollars would really be to pay for the demolition, the substantial cost of demolition.
Mr. Saddlewhite, Ms. Gately, Rick Stoddard, and then Jared.
Thank you. Just to piggyback off of what Member Castellano said about the city being land poor, when we were looking at the Pickering Project, part of it was going to require the city to have to buy some private land. So are we even thinking, are we taking that into consideration? That just drawing this off our books and putting it somewhere else, it doesn't change the facts of the need of the state, the fact, our issue? I know that there's talks about asbestos. I'm assuming that we've known this for a long time. So I'm not sure why, two years after we've voted on it, that it's now become an issue. I just, you know, in 2019, we met, we talked about our issues with regards to the land. We have that 1,500-page report from the Pickering Project. You know, we know the issues that we have. And if we do take any, I think publicly, we have to replace, we have to replace that park or whatever with something else and, you know. I just, I have a lot of what-ifs and, um, and obviously concerns with just giving it to the city without knowing these specific answers.
Ms. Gately?
Um, Mike, if I remember correctly, on October 27th, 2020, okay, there was a very large fire over there at Thergen Marshall, the old Thergen Marshall. So can you explain to me, we're paying large amount of insurance on it, but there was a fire. So they, how do they compensate? Like, if you have a fire in a building, you usually get insurance to compensate it. Am I wrong on that? I don't know.
Yes, yes. You don't get insurance on a cash value building that's vacant. There is no insurance on that. We have to have liability insurance, but no one's going to pay us $5 million because there was a fire in a building that hasn't had a child in it in 10 years and it's polluted with asbestos. We have to, I want to just jump ahead and we have to look at the bigger picture here. The bigger picture is, we haven't built a school in how long? We have to move these hurdles. We have to know our roles and what we're elected to do. We have to remove these hurdles and try to get a school built, one right after another, hopefully sooner than later. I look at this as a hurdle. I'm sort of an outsider where most of you have 10 and 20 and 30 years, maybe even more. So I'm looking at it from a good money after bad. I want to get a school built. I want to get ventilation in these systems. It's going to take significant resources. And we need to be careful that we don't overstep what our role is and say, look, nobody knew how bad the asbestos was. It's, when you do one drilling and post, you find something out and you find something out. Unfortunately, it's just the way they were built back then. And we need to do something about this without stopping the progress we want to make towards building new schools. So I think there's a bigger picture here. I'm not worried about land and space. You always find the space. You know, we struck out four or five years ago. I don't want to strike out again. I want to have a shovel-ready school in the next, you know, 24 to 36 months. And I think this is a good step, showing everybody we're serious. But we can't worry about things that are out of our control, like asbestos.
Mr. Stoddard?
Thank you. So as Mike and the mayor both said, the bids that we got on that property were nonperforming to the RFP. And so that's why the building's still up. According to the council president, he's been approached by a couple of developers. One of them had bid on it in the past. They specialize in converting old school buildings into housing, particularly affordable housing, in this case, affordable senior housing. They're willing to put another bid back in. I think that's considerable in leaving the building. They will use the existing building. So the council president asked me to come on and once again, ask you all if you'll give us a period of time to get RFP back, get an RFP drafted and back out and get a submission and move forward from there. So that's what I'm here asking for tonight is for a period of time for the Public Property Committee to put that together and attempt to sell that property once again.
Mr. Nicholson? Mayor, do we have to start at 7:00? Is that a problem?
I think, I think we can go over a little bit on this discussion. I would say, uh-
All right, Jared?
Probably try and narrow the discussion down. We can go over, as long as we're not doing it before the meeting.
Thank you, Member Ford. Thank you, Mayor. I'm also happy to, you know, I'll try to be concise, but I mean, we can continue the discussion. But what I was going to say is, can we do what we did last time, which is set up the RFP, go forward with it, and then put the conditions on it that we're interested in and have it revert back to us if it doesn't go through? I mean, that's the way we solved it last time and we're able to move forward quickly. I mean, I think that this body absolutely is desperate to rebuild their new schools that really needs to be increased. And so I think that my, what I'm not sort of understanding is the progression of events here. Like, don't we have what we need to be able to start doing the RFP if we were able to say that we approved putting out an RFP?
The reality is, it's, we're trying to sell something that needs two bodies to agree. And it makes it harder. It's kind of like buying a house from a divorced couple where they both have to agree on the selling price. We have roles here and we want to make sure that, you know, we're able to get this completed. Sometimes that's a deterrent to people. If they know that if it doesn't meet the needs of one body, then they're not going to bid on it. It's something that I've never experienced. It's always, whenever a building was no longer used by students, it was declared surplus. And then the city, you know, worked with a group on an RFP or an RFQ and put it out and surplused it. And I think you'll find-
Part of the problem we have in the past is that we have turned buildings over to the city and, you know, then we don't have the land we're trying to build. We have Boston Street, the Borough School, we got Lewis Street, we got Franklin Street. These are all buildings that are being used now and we don't have any place to build a school. We had 13 locations we looked at during the Pickering debacle and, you know, none of them were satisfactory to the people and Lynn. I think we get an issue. And I, I don't want to be controversial, but my opinion, just in my own opinion, is that we cannot build our way out of this situation. To get one school every four or five or two or three years, we've got 12 schools now that are over 100 years. Five are on life support. And I just don't see how you're going to build a way out of this. That's just my opinion. Anybody else? Ms. Gately?
Oh, Michael, what is it you're proposing? I'm a little unclear. You want us to?
Declare the building surplus so that the, you know, the Public Buildings Committee can put an RFP out.
They had an RFP out.
Isn't that-
No, but now we know how to do it differently because we have different hurdles. Remember, the RFP was going to have that building taken down to the ground at one point in time.
Okay, so I'm trying to connect some dots here. That's how I think. So what you're saying, and Rick, what are you saying? Like, are you saying the same thing?
Basically.
Probably should be putting it in-
For the school committee to take a vote and turn the property over to the city side so that we can craft an RFP and get it back out. You know, like I said, we had a couple in the past. We had Benai Barith. They wanted to demolish the building and put up and build new. Then we had the East Boston Group who wanted to rehab the existing building. And they've approached the council president to basically have another bite at the apple. And I think that there's one other out there as well. So knowing what we know now, like Mike said, it's a different set of circumstances. We'll craft the RFP around that, kick it back out, and then hopefully, something will come back where we can get, we can expedite this and get it done.
So where we're losing, like, we're losing land and that's where land lost. So we need to have a site. So before, like, when we were trying to build it, Pickering on Parkland Ave, which I'm not saying anything we're going to do, I'm just saying, when we're looking at that, we would have to use some park property. And so is there a way that can help us to be able to explain to our constituents that, yeah, we're letting this building go to the city side, but we're keeping a promise that when and if we need land, it would be very supportive? Does that make any sense?
Who would be supportive?
Well, you know, like, sometimes if you have to take a park to build a school, you have to replace the park somewhere in the city.
Right.
That's what I'm talking about. Like, if there's something that we have to take, we have to replace it somewhere in the city, that the city would help us out with that.
What are you saying, using that space as parkland?
Not necessarily that space, but any space that we may take, we need to replace.
Well, I think on the city side, you know, wherever's open is, as you all are to creating park space. When Water and Sewer has to now take a little piece of Tech Field to take care of the Westland flooding problem, because they took a piece of a park, they've agreed to pay to rehab the old Edmonds Field down off of River Street and turn that back into park space. You know, whatever city property there is, and there's not a ton of it in public property that hasn't either been built or that doesn't already have a park on. But, you know, we'd be open to creating more park space if that was necessary.
Like, like we were going to build a middle school behind, like, on McManus Field, we were going to have to be able to give, where are you, Rick? Oh, there you are. Have to give, if we took some of that parkland, we'd have to replace it, but that would be doable. We would get the support from the city for sure.
Oh, yeah, yeah.
And I don't want to speak for you, Rick, but I'm sure that the council is, as we move forward on new schools, will be very supportive in finding the right support, whether it be finding park space or others, depending on where the schools would be built. I think if we're looking at this site here, it's two blocks from Ingles, two blocks from Marshall Middle School. I don't think there's indication that Pickering would ever be even thought of to go in that location or whether or not another school would be appropriate in that very dense neighborhood with two major schools within blocks of that location. There is challenges that we face throughout the community, but there are, there is land available on many of the school, bigger school buildings that could be potential sites for land that is not necessarily land we have to buy next to several of the schools. And that's part of the planning process that those dollars will be allocated for, which Mike's talking about, for the moving forward and showing the MSBA that we're willing to come up with 1.4 million to do the study, that we're ready to go. We're being proactive. That's where part of these dollars would go. And I think to continue to hold on to this land, you know, creates, you know, you can give another bit of time, and Rick knows this because he's been very involved, and the RFP may not reflect a legitimate proposal even at the next stage. So it's important to see what we do on that site. Does the building at some point have to come down if it's really going to be a potentially an acceptable RFP that works for the city and for the neighborhood? So I think there's a lot of questions that sit on that site. And then, again, as that continues to be in the purview, and I guess this question would be a legal question. I should know, I don't know the answer to it. Even if we give a six-month period of time to hand that land over for another RFP, Rick, so do we still, do we still have to, or six months or a year, whatever it might take, we're still paying the costs related to that off the city, off the school side? Even though it's, you know, it's a temporary move. So I don't know what the answer to that question is. Maybe Mike does, or John, my host might have any-
Jared, and then Brian?
Um, yeah, if either Attorney Myhouse or Mr. Batino wanted to answer directly to the mayor's question, that's fine. But, um, so I'll just say, to Mayor McGee's point, I totally agree that the council is apt to share the school committee's priority above new schools, which makes me feel like, you know, we can continue to work together, which is what we did with the last RFP. And then the, to your point, if things don't work out with this RFP, which as you just mentioned, my case, then we would be back to the drawing table together and we'd be, have that conversation on behalf of the city to do what we were elected to do. To Mr. Batino's point, is the working to make sure that we have the physical capital for the schools that we need. And, you know, in terms of operational costs, I would tend to agree that we shouldn't be letting our educational dollars be burdened for something like this. So, you know, I would request that the city understand if that is being charged to the school budget and to be making up for that in the allocation. Because, you know, the city budget for education is coming through the city. And so the city has the ability to increase the allocation to offset those operational costs that would be charged to us.
I think it's a, you know, it's a two-way thing. I think Mike alluded to it a little while ago with spending on the city side that goes towards the schools. You know, we just allocated the money the other night for the feasibility study for the windows down at Tech. And even though that will ultimately be a MSBA project, you know, it's still city money that comes on what's to be borne by the city.
And to follow up on that, Rick, it's a great- And and to follow up on that, Rick, it's a great point. The 1.4 million is city dollars. The, uh, the modulators are city dollars, so there's there's an investment that's being made to, one, to move the Pickering project forward, to make the modulators available, to do the, uh, accelerated program, uh, at the Lynn Tech School. I think Mike was was articulating, so this, there there's more than, uh, support on the city side to make some of those capital investments that are city dollars, not school dollars, to try and move some of these issues forward that I know we all feel strongly about, trying to get schools in shape, and then making the investment related to the, uh, uh, the ten buildings spending close to probably six million dollars to uh, get those up to speed, that that, um, that's just about ready to go forward. So there's a, you know, there's a lot of, uh, I think, investment that the city side and the council and and and, uh, uh, CFO recognizes has to be made, and and I don't mean has to be made, but, you know, we want to make those investments from the city side because it's important for the for the, uh, schools and for the investment we need to make in our community. So it is, it is kind of that discussion, what's the right approach here uh, on a, on a location that's been a real problem, and a building will continue to be a problem for a longer period of time. There could be a, an RFP that gets accepted, and then maybe it doesn't get accepted, and it continues to be a challenge. You take it off the school side, um, then it's, then, you know, the focus can be more clearly on new schools and a new school and maybe schools, and more, uh, city investment on on those efforts, um, as well. So, uh, I think that's the discussion here. What's, what can we do to both, um, address what's been an ongoing challenge uh, as we continue to, and I just want to make a point, the, you know, the the asbestos, as as they've gone through the, uh, different pieces of get taking that building down, uh, there's more engineering and more, um, investigation that goes on, as then they drill into it, they found more and more that that building, what initially had been anticipated was, uh, the cost was substantially more costly because the the, uh, the asbestos, it wasn't clear that it had been really, it's actually part of the concrete, it was poured into the concrete, so it's, uh, that was discovered as part of the, um, the ongoing efforts to demolish the building, so that wasn't apparent uh, when the initial proposal was made, and that's where the costs have substantially escalated, because you have to truck all of those pieces out in a way uh, that you wouldn't have to if the asbestos wasn't really in every part of that building, uh. So it's, it's, uh, like I said, it's a real, you know, trying to find the right approach here, and and I think Mike's, Mike's perspective is that maybe, you know, that if we do, uh, declare it surplus, it allows us to focus more clearly on on more positive direction and investment in buildings. Uh, I don't know if Mike wants to follow up, or if that was, uh, what we're talking about, Mike?
Yes, thank you, Mr. Mayor. Essentially, uh, one of the the things I do is the capital planning for the city. I would personally like to take this three or four million dollar, um, issue with this building off my project and reallocate that money. If it's still there, I still have to keep that. Uh, there might not be two stars next to it, but there's gonna be at least one star because now we have the ability to tell people, you take the building as it is, you take it, this is, these are the uses you can do with it. You have to take control of the building within sixty days. Now we know that, now I can reallocate that three or four million that I would have to leave, you know, with an asterisk next to as a potential liability to the city. Now I can repurpose that money. And that's really what I'm trying to get at. I'm trying to repurpose some capital money to get some projects done in a timely fashion for the city, most notably for the school buildings. And and there's a lot, I mean, even, and costs just keep going up. Um, so I have to be very careful to get the most bang for our buck for the city and having a three or four million dollar problem that I can not have to deal with means that there's three or four million dollars more that can go into capital projects for the entire city, including the school. As I said, you know, there's three or four projects that um, we're committed to funding. We just need some support to take away some liabilities on the other side of the equation. And with the proximity, we know there's probably not gonna be a school there. It doesn't mean the RFP can't, you know, have, um, a park bank in it. We can say, you know, if there is an acre of land that we could count for a park, then we can count it. But I just don't, I want a plan without this extra three or four million. That's what I'm getting at. And, you know, I've been here two and a half years. You know, we've tried a couple approaches, it hasn't worked. So my thing is let the council work on an RFP to remove it, take that three or four million dollars out of the equation and, you know, get some projects done for the city. It's it's really that.
So, Mike, you just, like, earlier, so a motion would be, like, to have the building sailed and then have the city council write up an RFP?
Well, yeah. The 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 motion would be to declare it surplus, and then it's in the city's best interest to get an RFP out in the next, you know, sixty, ninety, a hundred and twenty days to see, let it go to the spring market. We now know that we don't want to spend three or four million dollars taking it down, so they'll be able to work an RFP that will take those things into consideration. So for some reason, we got two million for the building, just say, and then I don't have to spend three and a half million to take it down. That's a five and a half million dollar swing. And that's all money that can go towards capital.
My question is, if we, if we voted two years ago to tear it down, why do we have to turn it over to the city now to have that done?
It would be to sell it, not to tear it down.
Tear it down, demolish it.
We don't, but we don't have the money. And and unfortunately, John, the one thing I can't do is I can't change the past. I can only help with the future. If I could change the past, we'd be talking a whole different thing. I'd be, I'd be next to Brady, you know, running down the field, but unfortunately, I can't do that. So let's think about the future and not the past.
I just don't see why we have to turn it over in order to just move forward. Why can't we do the same thing we did a couple of years ago with the RFP? I was on, I went to every meeting they had. Do it that way, I don't, I don't know.
But we needed uh, the approval of the school committee in order to be able to do that, so that's what-
We had, we gave it to you, we never changed it.
I I think it timed out after six months or something.
Nobody said anything.
And it went back to the, uh, the school, school department.
Yeah, it was a, it was a six-month, uh, option.
That's right.
Uh, uh, we're going into seven thirty now. I would suggest, uh, we can have more discussion at the full meeting. There's a lot to think about. Uh, and whether or not we're able to come up with a decision tonight or not, uh, we can always, uh, have a discussion at the next meeting. Uh, we can discuss, I'm sure we can discuss it at the full meeting, uh, that we should probably go into. Uh, but I think it's, um, a lot to digest. Uh, I think it's, uh, I want to thank Mike and Rick for being, uh, part of this discussion, really helpful uh, to have you both here. Uh, so, uh, I'd like to go into the full meeting. Uh, I'll leave it up to John to, uh, um, um, whatever action on the the subcommittee would like to take, but it's an opportunity potentially to, I would suggest, uh, uh, maybe give us some time to, uh, um, get more information or more thoughts through this and and then, um, bring it up maybe at the next meeting related to the proposal.
Would it be prudent to table it until the next meeting?
Um, that'd be, I think we could do that as well. I, we do have a pretty full agenda, so we've had a pretty robust discussion. Now we can, uh, you know, that's that's up to the subcommittee members, but to table it and then
Motion.
And 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 then re- revisit it on at at our next full meeting.
Yes, I think if we haven't built any grounds, make it longer than fifteen minutes. Intertain a motion.
Intertain a table it till the next committee meeting.
Uh, second.
Motion to table is undebatable. Tabled until the next meeting. Uh, motion to adjourn?
Still, in the meantime, we can still talk to people and see what, you know, loosely what kind of interest is out there.
Yeah. Intertain a motion to, uh, adjourn.
Second. Adjourn. All in favor?
All in favor.
Aye.
Nice seeing you all.
Thanks, Rick.
Have a good night.
You too. Thank you.
Thank you.
Patrick, how do I get over to the regular meeting from here?
You have to put in your email address, your school email.
I I can't, I'm on the regular phone.
You're all set.
Oh, thank you.
Yeah, you're, you're, you're good to go.
You're in. You're in with us, Donna.
Okay.
Are we ready to go? We're gonna jump right in. Um, I want to welcome everyone to the sec- uh, to the, um, let's see, second meeting of the Lynn School Committee, Thursday, January twenty eighth. Uh, as a preliminary matter, I'd like to confirm attendance. On the end, would you please confirm all the members of the committee? Uh, persons anticipated on the agenda that our president can hear us, which would be the, uh, the the staff and the, uh, the attorney.
Um, Mr. Cassianus?
Present.
Mr. Capola?
Present.
Mr. Ford?
Present.
Ms. Gately?
Present.
Mr. Nicholson?
Present.
Mr. Sadaway? Mr. Sadaway? I know you're here.
Present.
He's here.
Mr. Tom McGee?
Present.
Okay.
Thank you. Uh, again, this is, uh, Mayor Tom McGee. I'd like to say good evening and thank you for joining us for this open meeting of the Lynn School Committee, being conducted remotely, consistent with Governor Baker's executive order, March twelfth, twenty twenty, due to the, uh, current state of emergency in the Commonwealth due to the outbreak of COVID nineteen virus. In order to mitigate the transmission of the COVID nineteen virus, we've been advised and directed by the Commonwealth to suspend public gatherings, and as such, the governor's order suspends the requirement of the open meeting law to have all meetings in a publicly accessible physical location. Further, all members of the public, of public bodies are allowed and encouraged to participate remotely. The order, which you can find posted with agenda materials for this meeting, is on the city website. It allows public bodies to meet entirely remotely so long as reasonable public access is afforded so that the public can follow along with the deliberations of the meeting. Ensuring public access does not ensure public participation unless public, unless such participation is required by law. This meeting will not feature public comment. For this meeting, the Lynn School Department is convening by telephone conference via conference via the Zoom platform as posted on the city's website and on the Lynn Public Schools website. Additionally, this meeting can be viewed on the local cable channels, Channel Three for Comcast and Channel Thirty Seven for Verizon. Please note that this meeting is being recorded, that some attendees are participating by video conference. Accordingly, please be aware that other people may be able to see you and to take care not to screen share your computer. Anything that you broadcast may be captured by the recording. We're not, uh, before we turn to the first item on the agenda, uh, I'd like to cover some ground rules, uh, for effective and clear conduct of our business and to ensure accurate meeting minutes. As the chairman, I will introduce each speaker on the agenda. After they conclude their remarks, I will get down the line of members inviting each by name to provide comment, questions, or motions. Uh, hold your na- hold until your name is called. Remember to mute your phone or computer when you're not speaking. Also, remember to speak clearly and in a way that helps generate accurate minutes. Uh, for any response, please wait for the chair, uh, to yield the floor to you, and then state your name before speaking. If members wish to engage with discussions with other members, please do so through the chair, taking care to identify yourselves. Finally, each vote taken in this meeting will be con- conducted by a roll call. With that, I will, um, ask if everyone will stand and join, uh, with Don. Don has the, uh, on video camera with the flag. Please join me in a salute to the flag of the United States of America. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands. One nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Please remain standing for, uh, a moment of silence for uh, several people who have passed away since, uh, um, um, Lydia Bloxidge, who was a retired cafeteria worker who passed away on December thirty first of twenty twenty. Dorothy Bemis, a retired teacher who passed away on January fifth of twenty twenty one. John Jack Egan, retired teacher who passed away on January seventeenth, twenty twenty one. And Ruth Sonigan, a retired teacher. Please join me in a moment of silence. Thank you. First on our agenda is, uh, appointments. Uh, and, uh, Dr. Tutwiler, would you like to speak to that?
Uh, I would indeed. Uh, very excited to, uh, announce the uh, new director of the Welcome Center. Uh, by way of, uh, brief history, uh, we were able to uh, successfully negotiate with the Lynn School Administrators a standalone position for, uh, the director of what is now called the Parent Information Center, or PIC. Uh, we worked together in this space and then also with uh, the Lynn School Administrators Association to develop a posting, uh, which drew a very strong pool of candidates. We had a robust process, uh, interview process with, uh, members of the committee, uh, members of the community, community agencies, parents, uh, and of course, some of our own staff. Uh, and through that process, uh, one candidate, uh, for lack of better expression, uh, knocked our socks off. Uh, and so, uh, it is my pleasure, uh, to announce, uh, Aveth Martinez as the new, uh, director of the Welcome Center. Uh, and believe it or not, she is here, uh, and I'd like to uh, allow her to just say a couple of words.
Great. She's welcome.
She she said she can unmute herself.
Yeah, she, yeah, she's unmuted.
Hi, this is Aveth.
We can hear you, Aveth. Welcome. We can hear you.
Great. Uh, thank you, Aveth. I'd like to take a minute, if I may, to make a couple of remarks, if that's okay. Um, to officially thank you for this opportunity, especially the school committee. Thank you for, um, giving me this wonderful opportunity to lead the transformation of the Parent Information Center into the Welcome Center. It's an honor, uh, for me to be in this, a foundation role. I believe that the Welcome Center is the place of first interaction parents and children have with public schools. So it's a huge opportunity to offer them a welcoming, safe, and supportive environment. I would also, mm, like to mention that I'm very impressed by the thoughtful and inclusive hiring process. I really like the process, it's a huge step into promoting inclusion and equity and including stakeholders and inviting them to be part of the decision was something that I admire about this process. And, um, I can honestly say I wouldn't do this if it wasn't because I'm sure that the Lynn School District is currently under the right leadership from all of you. And I think that the the district is on that, uh, pathway, working hard to integrate culturally affirming practices and policies to promote equity and inclusion. Um, I can tell you that I would work as hard as I can possibly do to implement culturally responsive standards that promote healing, equity, and inclusion. I have witnessed in my experience as, um, as a mental health counselor in community organizing for the last ten years in Lynn, how empowered and supportive families will have empowered and successful children that can thrive and change their future and break the cycle of poverty and oppression. Thank you so much.
Thank you so much, Aveth.
Thank you. Good luck.
Good luck and congratulations.
Congratulations.
We'll see you on Monday.
Congratulations.
Excited.
Congratulations.
Monday.
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 Thank you, Beth.
Thank you.
Thank you. Next, next on the agenda is, um, a presentation, I Ready Universal Ass- Assessment Program. Uh, Dr. Tutwiler?
Yes, I I actually won't be making that presentation. Uh, with us, uh, this evening is, uh, Josh Mower, the Assistant Director for, uh, Data. Uh, who will be making the, uh, the official, uh, presentation. Josh, you you should have the ability to, uh, share your screen. Um, and what I would just say quickly, uh, in a, an early October Superintendent's Report, uh, I talked about a wonderful opportunity that we have uh, before us to, uh, leverage a universal screener, uh, an academic, um, assessment, uh, that would, you know, really help us from the standpoint of, uh, on the micro and macro level, both within schools, in classrooms, understanding where students are, uh, in terms of literacy and math, uh, in each individual classroom, but then also from a district standpoint, really having a a strong sense of the virtual platform, uh, that provides some rich data uh, on where we need to commit resources, uh, and- uh, on where we need to commit resources, uh, and offer additional supports. Uh, so I'm gonna turn it over to Josh to give you an overview of that, uh, program.
Hey, thank you, Dr. Tutwiler. You guys can hear me okay?
Yep.
Very perfect. All right. It might take me a second to set up here, to do this. Okay. And everybody can see the, uh, the PowerPoint presentation, correct?
Right.
Perfect. Okay. Uh, good evening and welcome, everyone. My name is Josh Mower from the LPS Kirkham Department. And on behalf of the, um, Di- District I Ready team, I would like to spend a couple of minutes sharing with you some of the highlights of the much-needed online universal assessment program aimed at identifying, supporting, and assisting our neediest students. I, I Ready has several valuable components to it, but this year we'll be using primarily as a diagnostic assessment tool. In a bit, we'll take a little deeper look at what I Ready means for our district. But right now, I would just like to open up this presentation with a quick two and a half minute I Ready overview video.
Hi, my name is Mark Bernstein. I'm a National Director at Curriculum Associates, and we are the I Ready people. For the student, I Ready serves two functions. Number one, it's an online diagnostic assessment that pinpoints math and reading skills down to the sub-skill level. And number two, it's online learning that caters to a student's specific needs, whether those needs are on, above, or below level. I'd like to share four things you need to know about I Ready. Number one, the I Ready online assessment is adaptive in nature. This means that students see questions based on how they're performing. If a student struggles, the questions get easier. If a student is breezing through, the questions become more challenging. Once a student completes the diagnostic, the teacher will know exactly what this student needs, so it eliminates the necessity to overtest our children, thus allowing more time for teaching. Number two, the I Ready online instruction is personalized to the individual. Once a student completes the diagnostic, his or her results will differ from classmates. So we give each student their own pathway based on diagnostic results. If a student needs help with reading comprehension, that student will get lessons to help. If a student has geometry skills above grade level, that student will receive geometry content that's above grade level. Support for those who have gaps to fill, enrichment for those who are exceeding grade level expectations. Number three, I Ready is not a grading tool. Your child won't get an A or C minus based on how they perform in I Ready. I Ready supports students, challenges students, gives students math and reading content that is right at their level. I Ready helps children to grow, but it is not used to assign grades. And number four, I Ready is not designed to replace the teacher. In every school district, teachers are an irreplaceable asset. I Ready supports teachers by helping group students with similar needs for targeted instruction, what we call differentiation. Once small groups are established, I Ready's teacher toolbox is just one of the many resources that teachers may use to provide targeted instruction, but replace the teacher? Never. Thank you very much for watching this video. We look forward to seeing your students succeed with I Ready.
Okay, what is I Ready? I Ready is built from the common, uh, from the college and career readiness standards in reading and mathematics. It's an integrated system that reflects teaching and learning happening in, in our classrooms. I Ready provides comprehensive insight into student learning across K to twelve skills and pinpoints student strengths and areas of need. It shows aspirational attainable goals for each student to get them on a path to proficiency or advanced proficiency. I Ready Learning engages students through motivating personalized reading and math instruction based on their individual skill level. And provides teacher with resources for whole class and small group instruction to accelerate student growth and grade level learning. The diagnostic assessment assessments are designed to give us a clear picture of where students are and precisely what they need, uh, what we need to do to help them get to the next level. In addition, there is a high correlation between how students perform on the diagnostic and how they perform in the M, MCAS. And just to give a little more context, uh, to those numbers there, if I Ready, um, exactly corresponded to the MCAS assessment, it would have a correlation of one point zero. It'd be the exact match. An assessment correlation, um, of above point seven threshold is considered a strong positive correlation. We can see that, we can see that strong correlation between I Ready and MCAS in this graphic in both ELA in the green and in math in the blue across all grade levels. I'm just gonna leave that, this slide just for a few more seconds, just so you can see some of the numbers there. Uh, typically, we'd be gi- giving, um, the diagnostic three times in a school year, uh, once at the beginning, once in the middle, once at the end. Um, this year, um, because of the, the remote learning environment and the LMS, we started willing, given a diagnostic twice this year, um, at the middle and then at the end. But the data we get from both the diagnostics will prove just as valuable as giving it three times. With I Ready, if it is assessed, then it's designed to be addressed. Teachers will be able to instantly look at student strengths and areas of growth down to the domain level in both reading and math. Instruction will be planned based on the specific learning needs of students with both personalized online instruction and teacher-led instruction. We'll be able to look at the data as teams plan group instruction to maximize time and student learning. We'll also use data to communicate with parents and share student successes. As mentioned, the data from the diagnostic will help personalize student instruction. This online instruction is based on students' placement on their diagnostic and will provide targeted instruction to meet their needs. This online instruction is meant to support core instruction. A course is not meant to replace the classroom teacher, but rather provide the teacher with the tools and guidance for personalized instruction. It will also help us better understand which domains students need additional support in. Uh, just to give you, uh, an overview of what's happened so far and what's being planned for I Ready. Uh, this past January, uh, there was professional development for, um, all teachers in ELA and math, um, which, there were about eight hundred total staff, so it was a district-wide, uh, PD. Staff and students are currently practicing the diagnostic. It'll begin taking assessment. They started it this week and will continue for the next two weeks. Uh, the testing grades this year for diagnostic in ELA are grades three through ten and, and then in math, one through ten. In order to inform parents and, and, um, elicit their, uh, assistance in helping the students with the diagnostic and online learning, there were a couple of family engagement webinars, uh, last week, uh, the week before, the January twenty first and twenty sixth, that helped, um, inform parents of what I Ready is and also gave us an opportunity for them to ask questions. Uh, the teacher dev- there will be teacher development around analyzing the diagnostic results and desi- designing the appropriate responses, uh, that's gonna be scheduled in early March. And of course, we're really excited about I Ready, and, uh, these are some of the reasons why. It's a universal screener, um, at all levels in math and ELA. This is not something we've had before. This allows us for progress monitoring throughout the school year instead of waiting until the end of the school year and then getting the MCAS results over the summertime. Uh, it's, it uses an implementation of a research-based acceleration strategy. Uh, one of the things we're most excited about, we get the results from diagnostic immediately. As soon as students finish that diagnostic, we can see the results and beginning, uh, planning that instruction. Uh, and it obviously provides data to personalize, uh, student learning. Uh, there obviously, there will be much more to come, uh, regarding I Ready. But this time, if, if people have, uh, any questions or comments, uh, feel free to ask and we'll answer the, answer them. Stop sharing.
See a lot of hands popping up, but, um, remember Statoite, remember Castellanos, then remember Gately. Thank you, Josh, uh, for the presentation. Um, I, I love, uh, hearing about the, the ability to, to target where the student is. Um, one of the things that I, I was thinking of when I, uh, was listening to the, uh, the video i- is will curriculum, uh, be able to use, uh, the data to analyze if the content that, uh, we're teaching in each grade is appropriate, um, for each grade level as well? Say that the students are all ahead in one area and, and the content we're giving them is, it's just, it's, it's, it's not appropriate. Is that something that the, the curriculum's gonna also use to make sure that what we're providing to our students are, are infor- information that, that's appropriate at this point in time?
Yes, that's, that's one of the thoughts behind that professional development in early March. Looking at the results from this and if it shows that, hey, we're doing really great in this area, let's, let's focus on these other areas. So it's definitely gonna be integrated, uh, with the, the, with the curriculum department as far as looking what students really need, um, for, for this year.
Okay.
Thank you.
Uh, member Castellanos and, uh, member Capola, if you wanna ask a question, I know you're on, you're on the call, um, please.
I do when it's a chance, yep.
Okay, we'll go to member Cast, member Gately, and then member Capola. And then, and then member Nicholson.
Mr. Mower, uh, thank, sorry. Thank you so much for your presentation. Um, so I just have a couple, um, questions regarding the I Ready itself. What, you know, have you guys done, obviously, you don't know a lot of, you guys went through the different pro- prior to other organizations, but what, what other districts are using I Ready? What other, um, folks, you know, when you guys went through the process and in terms of cross, you know, compare analysis of, you know, the other similar products, why did you, why, why do, is a diagna- is, is a diagnostic assessment tool? There, there's a lot of different vendors and products out there. Why I Ready? What, what made that product stand out? And what had, what was the cost of that? If you could just share, I don't know if that's appropriate, but I'd like to just know.
So.
Josh, start, do the first part and I'll do the second part.
Okay. Yep, so obviously with any, um, resource that we use, there, there's a kind of a vetting process. You reach out, you see what other, uh, similar urban districts. And honestly, this, that happened back in like September and October, and I don't remember exactly which ones. I know every district that we contacted, there was only positive reviews. I put out, I asked them to do a quick survey, um, did they like it? Was it teacher-friendly, student-friendly? Uh, were they recommended? What other things were they considering of the products? And they, everyone that came back was extremely positive. So that gave us a, a good feeling that yes, this is something we want to research further. Uh, it was just, this, we have not had a universal screener. It was online, uh, the reviews were good. Um, and the co- the cost was in line, everything else, which Pat will address in a second.
Kim, go ahead.
Yeah, I also want to acknowledge that this was, you know, this is, Josh mentioned that this is an acceleration strategy. And Desi, that Desi came out and supported, um, I Ready. They have a system for vetting, um, all of the curriculum. It's called curate. And I Ready is one of their recommended programs as a universal screener. Um, and that came highly recommended. And the diagnostic portion, in order to encourage districts to begin to use this acceleration strategy, was provided free.
That's the part I was gonna share, but that's all right.
I'm sorry.
So there, there was a vetting process and we just, we felt, felt really good about the, the program we picked, obviously.
So, uh, I just, just, just for, cause I know my, um, member Gately, um, we are, we're on the, the Subcommittee for Curriculum. Um, I think just future, I, and I never, I, I know, Josh, that you guys do a, a great job in curriculum. It's just, it's, it would be, you know, good to kind of be in the loop, just to include the Subcommittee on those things, so we know. I never questioned, I, we didn't, I didn't, I wasn't aware, and I know the vetting process is good, it just, in terms of how I communicate to other constituents and sometimes the teachers and all folks in the, in the, in the district. So it's just good to be part of that process, just for future decision-making, or, and I'm glad to hear it's free. Or, I hope there is a cost though eventually, right? So we say.
Absolutely.
So.
In this school year.
Okay. Thank you.
Can I just, Mayor, Mayor, uh, just quickly, uh, speak to that concern?
Yes, Dr. Tutwiler.
Uh, I, I did alert the school committee to the fact that we were, uh, had this wonderful opportunity before us on October eighth, uh, almost immediately when it was made clear that it was something that we were, we were going to do. Um, this is a, this is not a curriculum. This is not a, you know, an adoption. Um, it's simply a means through which we can determine, uh, where students are. Uh, so, you know, heretofore, we've done all sorts, well, in my short tenure here, uh, sorts of things with assessment that don't necessarily come before, whether it's, you know, use of an end-of-unit uh, assessment or shifting the way that we, um, are, 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 uh, collecting and, uh, sort of concatenating data that hasn't necessarily gone for review before the, um, uh, curriculum Subcommittee, so I didn't necessarily think that that was, um, something that should happen. But, but I did alert the, the school committee to this, uh, almost immediately. Uh, but going forward, I'm happy to bring this sort of thing before the Subcommittee as well.
Dr. Tutwiler, I appreciate that. So just to, um, just to follow up with, um, I know this year is free. What's the cost for next year? De- I know Deputy Superintendent Powell's is gonna speak on it. What, what would be the cost for next year?
For the whole district? I don't know, but we certainly can report out on that.
I, I'll add to that. Um, this is something, and, uh, I, I know that, uh, the, the deputies know this. Uh, Evo Malley, I can see is, uh, in the attendees watching right now. This is something that the district is sorely missing. I, I, I think we're one of the few districts that don't have a universal screener. Almost all of them that I know of do, whether it's Renaissance or MAP or ANET or I Ready. Uh, it is a super useful tool for understanding, uh, how we can best personalize, uh, growth for individual students, but then also understand where the district needs to commit, uh, additional resources. So this is long, long overdue. Uh, un- unfortunately, while we're happy about it, um, I wouldn't necessarily like say that this is a, an innovative or new creative approach. Uh, this is something that's fairly standard across districts.
And prior to this, there was no universal screener at the secondary level in either math or ELA. So this, I mean, the fact that this is happening now is key. But there was nothing in place as a universal screener above the elementary level.
Okay, thank you. Member Gately?
Um, Ryan sort of took my thunder there. I was confused because they were going curriculum, curriculum, curriculum in the beginning. And it's like, I'm on, I'm the chairperson of the sub, of the, um, curriculum Subcommittee, and this wasn't brought forward. You did mention it, but it wasn't brought forward. Um, on that note, I, I can understand now why so many people have been contacting me or calling me and asking me starting in January, there's so many changes happening and parents are like, why are all these changes happening? We just get it all together and now everything's changing and I Ready comes in. So teachers are really feeling inundated with all this new stuff constantly coming at them, okay? But, but, that being said, after what I just saw and after what I know from teaching in high school and middle school, Josh, this is the key, isn't it? This tells us where our students are, when we need to know where they are. And that's what I liked about this. Seeing this presentation really helped me because there's so many students that you would have in your classroom that you weren't quite sure where they are. And this tool seems to be the, the key that's going to say to you, oh, this is where they're lacking. They're missing this little piece of geometry in their understanding. And if we can get them to overlap that, learn that, they can move forward. So I am sort of excited about this. I don't think it was an oversight on your part, Dr. Tutwiler. It's just that the presentation came out saying curriculum, curriculum, and we didn't see it. And, you know, like, if you're on that committee, you'd like to see the new stuff coming in so that you can, when people talk to you about it, you're not so embarrassed saying, yeah, I'm the chairperson of curriculum, but I have no clue what they're doing. So, just so you know, in the future, I would appreciate that, and I think Ryan would appreciate that. But, Josh, I love it. Thank you.
Great, so do we. Member Capola?
Yes, Josh, thank you. I love the immediate results. I think every parent and teacher should be pleased with that. Is it in all of the schools? And when did the students start this?
So, yes, it's in all the schools. The diagnostic started on Monday.
Oh, just this week, okay. All right, and have you heard anything, I mean, they're only on their four days now, but have the students embraced it, or are they using the devices that we gave them? Is it just being used on that?
Yes, they're using the devices we gave them. The technology department pushed out the link for iReady, and from all accounts, it's been extremely positive. We've had some principal feedback, since they're really excited about, like you said, the data they get immediately. The kids can see how they're doing, teachers can start looking at that data. To me, it's super friendly and intuitive to use. So obviously, I'm excited about that. Anything student-friendly to use and teacher-friendly, that's a sweet spot, find those two things.
Yeah. The only other thing is, how was the turnout for the family on the webinar?
They were pretty good. At the first night, I know we had 110, 115 families on that first Tuesday. And then the second one, it wasn't as well-attended. I think that part of the reason is that we had a recording basically from the first night that was put out there so people could view that one. So it was probably around half, a little more than half of that number.
Okay, but when we think that we're over 16,000 students, you know, I mean, even if it's like 12,000 families, that's not a very good turnout.
Yep, the iReady folks said that that's pretty typical. They were kind of excited by the number we did get. So, we had a Spanish translator there as well. We thought it was overall pretty successful, but yes, we always want to see more and more families, just-
Okay, and by translator, are you saying it's said in English and then translated? Or did we actually have something where it was just right in Spanish or for whatever language for them?
It was a translator who was, we do a small part in English and translator would translate that into Spanish. So it wasn't just written, it was actually a person translating.
Was there any, is there any possibility that we can get and do more those webinars, but actually translate it so that it doesn't go like that? And the parents who are doing Spanish can come on and do it in any other languages that we could translate it in to make it easier for all families?
Also, they're-
I don't know, just-
Donna.
Yep.
Even though we had a translator on, you know, when iReady presented videos, they presented first in English and then the videos were also done in Spanish.
Okay, so there weren't, it wasn't English stop, then translate that in Spanish, then, you know, three more minutes of English and then three more minutes of Spanish and so on? Because I know that at times that can be cumbersome for people who are on the line listening.
Yep. I will say that Jack and Gallo in one of the meetings that we were in with the iReady representatives did, you know, ask if we could get two separate presentations, one that was all in English and one that was all in Spanish for exactly what you're saying.
Yes.
Fortunately, the company was not able to do that in a timely manner.
Would they allow us to translate it, you know, do over? Do an over translation over theirs?
So, just to be clear, that night, it was, you know, 30 seconds speaking in English and 30 in Spanish, but they did, iReady did provide us two separate translations. So we had that available for families, one in English and one whole thing in Spanish.
Mm-hmm, okay.
For the video, Josh, you're talking?
Yes, yeah.
So the, okay, so the video is-
I'm just feeling like we're really behind the eight ball when it comes to translation. We, you know, we spend a lot of money because I see it in the warrants all the time. There's a lot of money spent on translation, you know, whether it's the phones or just other translation. And I think that, you know, I've been to some meetings where it comes across a little bit better than, you know, maybe how it's being done, but, you know, hopefully, maybe we can find something out there like iReady, you know, that can help us with translation and make it easier for the people who just need it in Spanish.
Okay.
Thank you.
Remember Nicholson, remember Ford, remember Castellanos, and remember Gately.
Thank you, Mayor. Thank you, Mr. Ford, for this. I just want to thank the district for taking this initiative. I think we all recognize that there's just, there is a huge potential for learning loss in the situation that we're in. And, you know, I was glad that we got this update in the fall and excited that we're delivering on this to proactively address that. And, you know, there's talk about, you know, we need to know how much learning has been lost that's going around in education policy. And I think the district is showing that, of course, they want to recognize there's a lot of loss, and there's ways to go about doing that that is supportive of students and supportive of teachers. And getting that kind of real-time results that we're getting with the iReady feedback and using that for differentiated education in the classroom is the right way to do that in this moment, I think. And so, I just want to say I appreciate that. I also, I was gonna ask a similar question, what remember Capola said, and I think we covered that conversation, but I would just add, you know, maybe that's some feedback we can share with the state about if that's the recommended provider, that I'm just asking for some more support around language access? Because I think one of the, and just making that own effort, I mean, it's great we did the orientation, but if we want this to be something that sticks with students, then we want it to be something that sticks with families, you know? And if we're thinking about how it can be used as a growth tool, it's the families that are gonna be there that are with that student year after year after year, and for them to be able to understand this as a diagnostic and grow with their student, I think would be really powerful.
I think that's some of that, we mentioned the PD in March around looking at the data and what to do next. I think some of that PD is also built around how do you share this with families? The success is to get them on board to partner with us, so.
Thank you. Remember Ford?
Josh, thank you for your presentation. Just a quick, this is gonna identify the level of proficiency of each student? The level of advancement?
In different domains. You may be strong in one domain, like in math, maybe algebra is great, but maybe your geometry or data or something is, you know, a little lacking. So it's gonna say, hey, this is what you need to improve, just work on this.
Okay, so that one, if there is a wide disparity within a classroom, is a teacher gonna be able to keep the top students motivated while bringing up the bottoms? I mean, is that attainable?
Yep, that's the beauty of iReady, right? It sets a recommended path for students, and teachers have flexibility to change. So kind of programs say, this is what you personally need to work on to reach that proficiency or advanced proficiency level, so that's one thing I'm most excited about.
All right, thank you.
Remember Castellanos, then remember Gately.
This is, might have been mentioned, but will parents see results immediately or just staff?
The staff certainly will see results immediately, and then the way you presented, the parents might look a little bit different. But the staff will get the immediate results, and then when they get shared with parents, yes, it will. Maybe not immediately, I'm sure they're gonna want to have a plan, not just results, but what's the plan going forward for the students?
Okay, and just in terms of just translation, language capacity, that's kind of like what we were just talking about, like when they get the results, I think interpretation, is that what, so would the interpretation come as a follow-up with the parents in terms of just results?
Yep, I believe that iReady, they have templates in multiple languages that you just basically plug the numbers in, but it translates what the numbers mean. It's similar to what they do for MCAS, they have, it's a template and there's also the numbers, so you can follow along with it.
Remember Gately?
So Josh, just about answered my question because Google has a translator tool that you can translate everything into any language. So you just about answered my question on that. Yeah, I was just wondering if they had translator. So that would sort of like answer Donna's question. There's a translator in the package that you can change it to any language because, you know, there are people here that, you know, can hear different languages, they need to have that too. Yep.
And certainly, certainly if they don't, then that's something that as a district that we would provide.
Okay, thank you.
Other questions from the members? Josh, thank you very much for the presentation. I really appreciate it, it was a good discussion.
You're welcome, thank you so much.
Thanks, Josh.
Thank you, Josh.
Next on the agenda, we've tabled the capital planning until the next meeting. Next is a vote to approve paying the cost of the schematic design study for window door replacement through the MSBA for Lynn Vocational Technical Institute. Dr. Tuttwiler, you want to speak to that, or?
Am I muted?
I'm muted, I'm muted. My computer is saying, you're muted. As you know, we, you know, are consistently attempting to address the needs in our, the physical plant needs in our buildings. It was in the paper today that Counselor Starbord mentioned earlier that at the city council meeting earlier this week, they've approved moving forward with the accelerated repair windows and doors at Lynn Tech in the main building. I'll have you know that in a call with the folks from the Mass School Building Authority, they let us know that they, given the pandemic and sort of the limitation around resources, they were a little pickier with projects. So we felt very fortunate to be invited to participate, to move forward. The next step is at this level, which requires the committee, Mayor, I believe you have some language?
I do, I do, I'm happy to read that, and I think it's a great investment for 80% reimbursement on the accelerated program. We do try and at least one project a year to try and continue to get those dollars in, which is great. And I will read the, the language. Order that the City of Lynn will transfer the amount of $120,000 from its budget in general reserve line item for the purpose of paying cost of a schematic design study for window door replacement on the Lynn Vocational Technical Institute located at 80 Neptune Boulevard, Lynn, Massachusetts. Including the payment of all costs incidental or related thereto, and for a grant from the Mass School Building Authority, MSBA, set amount to be expended under the direction, the School Building Committee. The City of Lynn acknowledges that the MSBA's grant program is a non-entitlement discretionary program based on need as determined by the MSBA, and any cost the City of Lynn incurs in excess of any grant approved by or and received by the MSBA shall be the sole responsibility of the City of Lynn. So that's been explained, and we would entertain a motion to vote to approve this proposal. Motion to approve? Has there been a motion in a second that requires a roll call?
Ms. Castellanos?
Yes.
Ms. Capola?
Yeah.
Mr. Ford?
Yes.
Gately?
Yes.
Mr. Nicholson?
Yes.
Ms. Statewright?
Yes.
Remember Gately?
Yes.
And can I ask who made the motions?
Remember Statewright made the motion. Who seconded the motion?
I did.
John Ford seconded it, remember Ford? Thank you. That's a good project and it's good to see it moving forward. Next on the agenda is dual-language expansion. Dr. Tuttwiler?
Yep, happy to, again, I will not be making this presentation. We have the Executive Director and Assistant Director of English Learner Education, Rania Caldwell and Amanda Campbell respectively, to share what I think is some really good news around a proposal to expand on our existing dual-language program. The current program is at Harrington. I'll let them do the official, you know, we've been calling this a reveal, but I'll turn it to them. But I will say that, you know, I see this personally as part and parcel of our equity agenda. The research makes abundantly clear the benefits of dual-language programs, not just for, you know, native English speakers, but in particular for native speakers of other languages. I think they're gonna share some data this evening that will certainly support what we know to be true about the power of this program, and I'm excited to propose an expansion.
Great, thank you, Dr. Tuttwiler, and Rania and Amanda, thank you, you're welcome, and looking forward to your presentation.
Thank you so much. I feel like we always have to do a sound check before we begin, so can everyone hear me?
We can hear you.
All right, so thank you all for having us. As Dr. Tuttwiler mentioned, we're gonna talk a little bit about dual-language expansion, but first, we want to kick off by giving you some updates on our program at Harrington, as well as kind of a refresher around some of the foundational principles of dual-language as we continue on this path in the district. So I'm going to pause and share my screen. All right. So, we're gonna kick off by just, as I mentioned, doing a quick refresher on dual-language, and I was very excited to hear all the conversations around language access in the previous discussion because it's something that is very prevalent in dual-language programming. So, as you'll note, all of our slides and presentations represent our two languages in our dual-language program. Spanish is always noted in red, and English is always noted in Spanish. So, we want to start off, we always start with the three pillars of dual-language education because it really is the foundation of dual-language programming, and effective dual-language programming does not exist unless all three pillars are present. We really work hard to ensure that every decision we make in terms of dual-language is based in all three of these pillars. So we do not make a decision unless every pillar is, that we can speak to every pillar in that decision. So we have bilingualism and bili literacy, academic achievement, and sociocultural competence. And although many people often think of bilingualism and bili literacy and academic achievement as the major benefits of dual-language programming, we, in our work, have learned that's a sociocultural competence piece, especially when you think of today's context and environment in society. You know, really allowing kids to work with other kids in, from various cultures and learn different languages and different cultures and different perspectives is such a valuable skill that will really develop, you know, great citizens in our community. We also like to continuously anchor ourselves in the research. And this research is from Thomas and Collier, it's from decades of research in dual-language programs across the nation. We know in Massachusetts, we haven't had a lot of dual-language programming due to some legislation that was in existence. But you'll see that when we talk about language development in English learners, you know, many of the programs outside of dual-language kind of peak in the early grades and then either plateau or drop down. And the only programs that exceed your non-EL students, which is that dotted line on the top, are your two types of dual-language programming, so your one-way dual or your two-way dual language, which is the program that we are currently, we currently have at Harrington Elementary School. So the research has supported this type of programming for decades, for English learners and non-English learners. Some other things that we always anchor ourselves in terms of effective dual-language programming, these are the seven non-negotiables of effective dual-language programs, and they are all important in developing an effective program. Dual-language programs are equity work, but it doesn't, you don't create equity by just opening a dual-language program, right? All of these non-negotiables have to be in place for it to work. So that shared leadership and collaboration, making sure that district personnel, school leadership, teachers are all on board and have that strong foundation and that shared vision. um, teachers are all on board and have that strong foundation and that shared vision. Um, elevating the status of Spanish is or the partner language, in this case it's Spanish, is really important so that, um, you know, we know our students are seeing a lot of English outside of school, on TV, on billboards, wherever they're traveling. So in the school setting, we want to make sure that Spanish is elevated so that our students can truly meet that bilingualism and bili literacy. Another component of dual language programming is that for the teacher, um, there's no translating. There's a very strict separation of languages. Teachers use strategies to support language development. Um, but they are a model of the partner language. And again, we want students to have as much exposure to the partner language as possible so that they finish the program bilingual and biliterate. Um, the six-year commitment, um, aligns itself, um, you know, many people think K to five, and that's why it's a six-year commitment. It just works well. Um, language research says that you need five to seven years to um, adequately, um, reach a high level of academic, uh, language proficiency in another language. So the K to five grade span is really a great opportunity to develop that bilingualism and bili literacy. And then asset-based approach and equity, I think that those two things really go together in acknowledging what our students are bringing to the table and what they bring to our schools and our classrooms. When we share our data a little bit later, um, I think you'll see firsthand on how important it is to really see what our students are bringing rather than what they're what they don't have. Um, and as Dr. Tuttwiler mentioned, you know, dual language really is equity work. And we are already seeing the benefits from an equity lens that dual language is bringing to our schools and our districts. So we're really excited about that. Another kind of refresher is, uh, language allocation. Um, in our Harrington program, um, we have a ninety-ten model. So um, in kindergarten, students are receiving instruction in Spanish for ninety percent of the day and ten percent in English language development. And then each year what happens is the Spanish decreases, uh, by ten percent and the English portion increases until a fifty-fifty split happens in grade four. And then that same, um, fifty-fifty is, um, is in grade five. So that neither language, um, so that English never is above the Spanish. Again, elevating that status of the partner language. And then how students receive content in dual language programming. Um, uh, in our Harrington model, we, um, have students receiving all of their content area instruction in Spanish in kindergarten. And then as the years go on, you'll see that in addition to Spanish Language Arts, students have English Language Arts, which happens in English. And then the Science and Social Studies units alternate between English and Spanish um, over the course of, um, a student's career. And mathematics from grades K to five is always in Spanish. Um, although there is a very explicit focus on the language of mathematics during the English language development portion. So that students learn the English vocabulary associated with the mathematics, but the mathematics is always taught in Spanish. And research supports that that model in terms of the content. And we wanted to quickly update you just sort of, we talked about timelines. We presented to, um, actually each time we've presented. And this is just an update on the work that we did complete. Um, we didn't expect to do this work in a pandemic. Um, but nonetheless, it got done. Um, in winter twenty twenty, we engaged in curriculum development totally virtually um, to create our maps. We continued our work with community engagement, family outreach. Um, spring twenty twenty, we registered our incoming kindergarten class. Um, summer twenty twenty, we finalized those curriculum maps. We continued professional development virtually for Harrington teachers and staff. And then fall twenty twenty, our kindergarten students arrived, um, virtually, um, at Harrington School and, um, we ensured that they had goodie bags and um, we got all the kiddos nice compañeros t-shirts to all wear. And, um, they, you know, the program is is exciting. And Amanda, I'm going to shift the gears to Amanda so she can talk to you about what the Harrington program looks like um, and how our kids are doing.
Thanks, Rania. Um, as Rania mentioned, I'm going to talk you through a little bit of our current Harrington program at kindergarten and some of the data we've seen. Um, in terms of enrollment, we have thirty-six, um, students on our language learning group one. Um, as a reminder, that is our Spanish-speaking English learners. They're identified as English learners and speak Spanish at home. We have eighteen students in language learning group two. These are students who are not identified as English learners, although they may speak Spanish or another language at home. And although we do not currently have any students that are non-Spanish-speaking Ls enrolled, um, if we did have them, they would fall in language learning group two as well. Um, our enrollment in dual language currently is slightly higher than, but still similar to the enrollment in the Harrington SEI classrooms. Um, as you may remember from past presentations, although the goal of a two-way dual language program is to have approximately half of each classroom, each language group, anything between approximately one-third and two-thirds is still within program goals, um, as the students who initially only speak Spanish or only speak English will eventually move towards proficiency in both languages as the program continues. Um, so our enrollment is in line with our current demographics at Harrington, um, and still fit the goals of the program. Next slide, please. Perfect. This is the slide I am most excited to share with you. Um, this is our Harrington dual language literacy data um, from the beginning to the middle of the year. Um, and the data that we see here, it really reflects the exciting things that we're seeing within our Zoom classrooms. Um, a couple of highlights there there on the right as well, um, but we have sixty percent of all dual language students making at least one level of growth from October to December when we last benchmarked. Um, and that's great to note because they're attending remote half-day kindergarten. So we're really thrilled to see that students are continuing to engage joyfully with literacy and develop as readers. Seventy-one percent of all students are reading on grade level in Spanish by December. And eighty-two percent of all English learners were reading on grade level in Spanish in December. And as Rania had alluded to, what we're seeing in the data and the conversations that we've had around this data is changing the narrative that's often told about our English learners. As you can see with the right assessment tools and with first language literacy support, our Spanish speakers are really thriving in dual language even in extenuating circumstances. And all students, regardless of language background, are being scaffolded and supported while learning to read and allowing them to develop in language and literacy in Spanish. Next slide, please. Perfect. This is the same data again, just in, um, Spanish. So I'll just pause a second in case anyone is following along at home and prefers Spanish. All right, next slide. Um, and so our next steps for Harrington kindergarten include recruiting our next class of future dual language learners, um, who will begin kindergarten this September. We also plan to review existing curriculum maps that were developed, um, last last, um, winter and spring, as Rania mentioned, in a pandemic um, remotely, um, and also review resources to make any adjustments or purchases that may be needed to fill in any gaps that we identify as we teach the maps. Next slide, please. Um, and so as we recruit and make adjustments in kindergarten, we also are expanding upwards to grade one also this September. Our next steps here are to hire two first-grade teachers and go through the development of thematic units and curriculum maps, and we'll follow the exact same process as we did for kindergarten last year. We'll also take a careful look at the current kindergarten class composition and ensure that it matches up with our enrollment targets and the overall goals of dual language. Next slide, please. Thank you. Um, the biggest change to our Harrington program, um, will be at the pre-K level. In the fall of twenty twenty-two, we plan to expand downward to the pre-K level. Although Harrington does already have both dual language and pre-K, because of the specific early childhood guidelines and regulations, this expansion will require as much planning as if we were opening a brand-new program at a brand-new school. Um, and so it's our intent to give the the planning process for pre-K at Harrington as much attention as we did in in the design of dual language itself at Harrington. Uh, next slide. Um, and so despite a lot of the unknowns for how the pre-K program will be structured, that's something we'll explore in the year and a half to come. The research is really clear about the benefits of early access to develop oracy and literacy in the first language. Um, and that an investment in these types of programs leads to less interventions later in school. And we are really excited about the opportunity to provide this access to Lynn's youngest learners. And now I'm going to hand it back to Rania.
All right. So as Dr. Tuttwiler mentioned, um, you know, when we started this dual language, um, process, you know, compañeros became like a baby to us. We we refer to it as our dual language baby. Um, at one point when we were brainstorming the name of compañeros, we had like a list of names on our board and it's almost like what you go through as you're you're naming your own children. Um, so we're we're excited to, um, introduce the, you know, in introducing the newest addition to the compañeros family, compañeros Connery. Um, and we're going to talk a little bit about kind of our process to arrive, um, at Connery and then we'll be happy to answer any questions that people may have. So similarly to how we selected Harrington, um, there was a thorough process where we analyzed, um, language acquisition data, MCAS achievement data, demographic data of our, um, schools with our highest English learner populations. And we know, um, that a successful two-way program requires a blend of students from both English and Spanish backgrounds, which Connery provides as you'll see from some data. Um, Connery has the demographic need, the English learners, the organizational capacity, um, to implement an effective and sustainable program. The majority of Connery's Ls are Spanish-speaking, um, and more importantly, come from a wide range of English proficiency le- levels, making a two-way Spanish dual language program ideal. Um, this is some some data around the home languages, um, represented at Connery School in terms of English and Spanish, the two uh, languages in in the program. Um, you'll see up until two thousand seventeen that the home language, um, the home languages of English and Spanish were right around the same, right around fifty percent. Um, and then we see that opening, um, where the there is a a large increase of Spanish, uh, home language and a, um, decrease in the home language of English. Now, it is important to note that this isn't a major demographic shift in the district, that there were some, um, large changes, um, in the registration process in terms of helping families um, appropriately identify home language during the intake process. Um, so the 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 two thousand twenty data is probably your your best accurate um, representation of kind of where, you know, we're we're starting to level out in terms of the two language groups. And then these are, um, English learners at Connery by, um, language. Um, you'll see that by far Spanish is the is the largest population at, um, Connery um, in terms of the English learners really supporting the need for a Spanish-English dual language program. And then as we mentioned, the 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 wide variety of English language proficiency of those students, um, at Connery, you see kind of a pretty balanced, um, um, pretty balanced levels of students at various, um, proficiencies, which really helps in a dual language program when you have students who act or can act as language models um, at different levels of proficiency for students who are in the program. And then finally, um, the planning timeline is very similar to the planning timeline we had for Harrington. Um, we start, we would start making programmatic decisions in the spring, um, building up Connery's, uh, staff and leadership team around some foundational knowledge. In fall of twenty twenty-one, we would, um, submit a proposal to the Department of Ed to open a new program. Spring twenty twenty-two, looking at that intensive curriculum mapping and planning and registration for the incoming kindergarten class. Summer of twenty twenty-two, prepare for program opening. And then fall twenty twenty-two, welcoming, um, new students to compañeros Connery. So that is all we have to share. I'll stop sharing our screen so that we can, um, answer any questions that you may have.
Um, members have questions? Member Capola?
No, I'm fine. Thank you.
Okay, member Nicholson, then member Castellanos.
Yeah, I I just want to say really quickly, thank you so much for this terrific presentation. This is, this is just such wonderful news for the district, um, something that I think we can be so proud of, uh, and excited about. And I I it's thrilling. So thank you.
Just want to echo, um, Attorney Nicholson. That was a wonderful, uh, presentation. Thank you, Rania and Amanda for taking the time uh, to explain and and just deliver on that. Um, also, I appreciated the the dual access, you know, as you you have, you know, English and you had Spanish. And I think it had me thinking about when folks um, watch our meetings, you know, and it makes me think a little bit deeper in terms of just, uh, access to language and understand what we do and kind of made me think about, you know, bigger picture. I really appreciate all the work that's being done. Definitely. Thank you.
Thank you. Could I just add to that, that we also make a conscious effort in those presentations to switch which language is first, right? Again, elevating the status of of the two language groups and not always putting one language first and the other language after.
Uh, member Sadoway?
Uh, and I I just want to say that, um, earlier today, we had, um, I bet, um, the new director of the Welcome Center on. And, uh, she spoke briefly about how she was excited about the inclusiveness of the, uh, uh, committee that, uh, interviewed her. Uh, one of them, um, parents actually had a student, um, in the Harrington program. And she spoke very highly of the program. Um, her son is not a Spanish speaker. Um, uh, his 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 primary language is English and she uh, spoke about that that positive experience. And and again, I think that, uh, just from today's meeting, yeah, that our the the people of the this, the citizens of Lynn can can grasp that, you know, we're we're taking a hold of 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 what's being presented before us. You know, dual language is 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 a great asset for the city. It's it's going to be a great foundation for our students. The Welcome Center having, um, uh, someone that that's that that's Hispanic and can speak Spanish to to families to welcome them into the city and and to, you know, the these are all, I think, important pieces of the puzzle that we need in order to to bring our district, uh, two steps forward. So I I appreciate that in in the presentation. Thank you.
Other questions? Uh, Rania and yes, member Gailey.
I just want to echo what my committee members said, and thank you very much for this presentation. And it's very, uh, a very um, hopeful future for Lynn. Thank you.
Yep. Amanda, if you'd like to, uh?
Yeah, sorry. Um, I just, I would be remiss if I didn't point out in the data slide that a huge shout-out obviously goes to the dual language teachers, um, the entire Harrington team, a lot of whom are in attendance tonight. Um, the principal there, Alyssa Giusom, we really couldn't have done it without the Harrington team there. And so a big thank you to them.
Great. Rania and Amanda, thank you both. Really uplifting presentation, exciting work that's going on and seeing the Conneries on on the cusp of the same kind of opportunity is really great. So, uh, good, great work, really exciting. Thank you so much for the presentation and the work you're doing together. Thank you. And all the teachers, everybody that's involved, making a big difference here. So thank you all.
Mayor?
Uh, yes, Dr. Tuttwiler?
Uh, the expansion requires a vote.
Okay. So, um, looking for a motion for a vote to for, uh, member Nicholson?
Uh, motion to expand the dual language program to Connery Elementary School.
A second.
Yep. There's been motion in a second, requires a roll call.
To Cassianus?
Yes.
Ms. Capola?
Yeah.
Mr. Ford?
Yes.
Ms. Gailey?
Yes.
Mr. Nicholson?
Yes.
Mr. Sadoway?
Yes.
Amanda Goo?
Yes. Thank you. Thank you all. Thank you, Dr. Tuttwiler. Uh, next on the agenda is, uh, proposal to bring, um, Lynn Tech seniors in person. Dr. Tuttwiler, will you be speaking to that?
I will.
Thank you.
Um, and with me is, uh, the principal from Lynn Tech. Um, and with me is the principal from Lynn Tech, Carissa Karakides.
Welcome.
Hi, everyone.
One second here for the... So I just want to be clear, this is not a presentation, but I just want to show two visuals that I think will help folks understand what it is we're asking for. I think the first thing that I want to do is just ask us to go back to, if we can, about three months ago, on October 29th, we made a proposal for quarter two, and in that proposal was largely that students would remain in remote learning, with the exception of select groups of students that we titled "Those Whose Needs We Struggle To Meet The Most." They were high-need special education students and our SLIF English learners, students who are, you know, at greatest risk for dropping out. In that proposal, we did not, or I did not, propose Lynn Tech students to return in any grade, because we were hyper-focused on those students who, you know, if you can think of a continuum, were the furthest down the continuum in terms of need, and really wanted to prioritize them. As we all know, we're excited to welcome those students back finally, beginning next week. But, you know, if I, if I could ask the committee to entertain a request to also consider another group, our seniors at Lynn Tech. I know this, you know, I've tried to be as intentional as possible around advance notice, where we have opportunity, the committee has an opportunity to think about things before they're presented. But this, this opportunity was something that I personally did not want to wait on. We're at a critical point now with our, with our seniors in terms of readiness for the workforce, readiness, you know, related to what they've spent the, the previous near three and a half years working toward. And I'm really looking for an opportunity to bring them back on a schedule and in a way that I think embraces safety first and foremost, but then also maximizes, you know, a pretty critical opportunity to get them ready for what they need on the other side of the, their graduation. And so what I'd like to do is just quickly, it's two slides, give you a sense for how many students and for what, a framework for what, you know, their day would, their return would look like. I would also say before I start this, you know, this proposal is in complete keeping with all of the existing MOAs that we have with the bargaining units and Lynn Public Schools. We've been in touch with the leadership of Lynn Teachers Union, as well as Lynn School Administrat-, Lynn School Administrators Association, both did not object to this proposal. And as you will see in just a moment, the proposal to welcome them back is pretty aligned with what's going to be happening elsewhere in the city, with our SLIF students and our high-need special education students. And so I'm hopeful that you'll see the same and approve this. And oh, one, one final thing, the reason why I'm bringing this to the fore is the, there was a very specific motion related to bringing back groups of students that did not include this group of students. Otherwise, I wouldn't bring it to this space, I would just tell you that this is what we were planning to do, but I want to stay on the right side of the law in terms of, you know, approval. So just quickly, as you know, there's 17 shops at Lynn Voc Tech. This is a breakdown by shop of the seniors who are currently attending. Just shy of 15 seniors, you'll see that, you know, the breakdown by shop is, the numbers of students is fairly low. I'll give you one more second just to kind of, to graze that, then I want to show you what it is we would, we would plan for. So, so quickly, we're proposing a model where seniors would return in two cohorts every other week. On Monday and Tuesday, half the students in a particular shop would be on-site for four hours, in groups not exceeding nine students. The other students who are in the shop would be learning remotely. Lynn Tech has done a nice job providing live demonstrations for their students so they can see what's happening in the shop. So the students who are learning in-person would have their opportunity to be assessed, as well as, you know, recapture experience working on machines or, you know, learning the competencies related to their particular shop, while the students who are learning remotely would have the opportunity to observe and participate from home. Wednesday would be a full remote day, and on Thursday and Friday, the other half of the seniors would be on-site, again, in groups no larger than nine, across the shops on-site for approximately four hours, to engage in the same sorts of activities that the group in the previous cohort engaged in on Monday and Tuesday. The following week, there would be no students on-site, because again, remember at Tech, they do alternating weeks between shop instruction and core content instruction, English, math, science, social studies. And so this is in every other week, Monday, Tuesday, Thursday, Friday scenario. I think, you know, this is, for me, after, you know, speaking with the director, just a really critical opportunity that's been thought about deeply, they planned down to the inch, everything from what doors students are entering, how they are going to proceed down the hallway. We have all the same personal protective equipment and protocols ready to go for this operation. And they've also planned really closely with the nurses in the building to ensure that every box is checked, every T crossed, and every I dotted. So at this point, I just want to pause and ask Ms. Karakides if there's something that I'm missing.
Oh, I believe that you covered everything, thank you.
Uh, one more important point, with approval, this would begin February 8th.
I'd like to make a motion to move forward with it, that the LVTI seniors can start in-person on February 8th with the stipulations that Dr. Tutwiler just quoted.
Uh, there's a motion on the floor, is there a second?
Second that, but I, I got one question I'd like to ask.
Yes, go ahead, member Ford.
Uh, Dr. Tutwiler, has any thoughts been, been given to the possibility of getting the shop teachers the vaccine? Only because shop is usually hands-on, it might be difficult to maintain that social distance. Uh, Lorraine and I were talking this back and forth today, with, on several conversations, and, you know, it was one of the things we were talking about, the possibility. It's only a small number, like, you know, 17 teachers, probably get one of the EMTs to give out the vaccine.
Mayor, do you want to go first or me?
Uh, you can, I'm happy to, we're following.
I got it.
You want to, you want to jump in, Dr. Tutwiler?
Happy to. I, I wish that I had that power, I really do. As you all know, I signed on to a letter that went to the governor and to the commissioner of education, asking that they prioritize educators, particularly educators working in communities like ours, so that we can accelerate the process of returning to in-person learning. The union president, LTU president Sheila O'Neil signed along with me. A regular conversation with the health director about the vaccine. I, I, there's, we just don't, I don't have any influence on, on that. I think, you know, to be honest, I don't even think that the state does, in terms of the, the amount of, the number of doses available. It's been a tough rollout, I mean, everywhere you look or read or listen, you hear that. These are things that I wish were better, and I, I wish that educators were prioritized, higher on the list. They are where they are, there's a window right now from February to April, during which educators will have the opportunity to receive the vaccine, but when in that window is any, any person's guess. So I, I really, I really wish, and I've, I've had the conversation with the city's health director, but there's, there are limited supplies as it relates to the vaccine, which is a frustration that's been felt, not just here, probably in every community in this state.
And, and as part of that, the protocol clearly identifies what phases and who is eligible with the current availability of vaccines at the state level. And I know Dr. Tutwiler and Sheila O'Neil and others have been advocating strongly, and I know that many local leaders are advocating for these kind of efforts, but the protocol's been established, and, you know, at this point, you know, we're required to follow the protocols based on the amount of vaccinations that are available, put a plan together in the city that will be, over the next day or two, will be probably public, related to having a location in the city of Lynn to start supporting vaccinations. It's our commitment to do as much as we can to get as many people vaccinated within the parameters that are laid out by the state, and in terms of availability, and working closely with Lynn Community Health Center, obviously the director of the health department, to, to put those pieces in place and get as many people vaccinated as possible, but that's, as Dr. Tutwiler said, is a decision that's being made at levels above us. Member Castellanos?
Yeah, similar to, so, so, and we're also going to be having special ed SLIF student, uh, staff coming in. It's just, I find it to be ridiculous that teachers are at a point where they're not able to be prioritized for this vaccine. You know, that's, that's a big piece to this pandemic and to getting folks back in. There's staff out there, you know, that are very concerned about this. We have students, families, there's a lot of, you know, people are going back and forth with this, but the vaccines are so, so important, you have people not taking the vaccine, and then these, they're sitting on shelves, the, the way, and I appreciate the efforts, and obviously it's looking like it's above, a little bit above, higher, but it is frustrating. And, you know, I know we're talking about February 8th as a start date, but, you know, no, there's, there's, that's, that's nerve-wracking, we have special ed coming in, you know, they, you know, why February 8th? What, what, what does that timeframe look like? Would a possible delay be more appropriate before we, I know you want to get everyone in, but like, is a delay something that we should go with instead of rushing the process? Because we want to keep students safe, I understand, and I respect the work that was gone, that gone into Lynn Tech, I, I do support that proposal. I just, I just, I'm worried about the, just the overall, you know, we still don't have any answers from the state, which is ridiculous. I don't, I really, it frustrates me, frustrates my constituents from both sides, and it's just, I feel like this is, you know, being, you know, back and forth, pulled back and forth from the state, and, and I, I respect, respect, you know, I understand protocol, it's protocol, but, I'm sorry, but that's, I think that's ridiculous. That's my, in my opinion.
Uh, don't disagree, there's, there's only limited vaccinations available and decisions are being made, and if we're going to continue to get those vaccinations, we need to follow the guidelines that are proposed, so we can continue to at least move forward on getting vaccinations out there. There's a lot of frustration across the board, you know, it was, it was botched for a long time, leading up to 2021, and now, you know, the federal government and the, the new president is, you know, focusing clearly on, on making this a reality in terms of, hopefully, the, the proposal he put on the table, 1.9 trillion, has substantial investment in getting vaccinations out and to, to make sure that we have them in our communities, but right now, it's a, it's a challenge to get them here, and I don't, I don't disagree with the frustration. Dr. Tutwiler?
Yeah, I would just, I, I, I am equally frustrated, which is why I signed on to that letter, which is why I'm in regular communication with anyone who will listen around prioritizing educators. I agree with the, with the, with the idea or the categorizing of educators as technically first responders. I mean, we are responsible for the learning and growth of, of students, and to the extent that we can receive the vaccination and begin providing services at a level and in a way that best suits and best supports student learning and growth, you know, that, that's something that we want to see happen. But I, I would, I would, I would stop short of saying that what's proposed both for LVTI and the special needs students and SLIF students in, in the coming days, I would stop short of calling that rushed. It is the midpoint of the school year, these are groups of students who, as we all know, have struggled mightily. We've thought deeply and carefully about the kinds of plans to provide in-person services in a safe way. Most of the students, you know, will be on-site on an AMPM model in-school for two hours a day, which some people might say is not that much, it's huge. When you're, when you're full remote going to two hours per day, four days a week, is enormous for, for these groups of students. And so in the same ways, it relates to Lynn Tech, I mean, I, I started the, the conversation by saying that we're at, kind of at a critical point, you know, in, in four short months, these students are going to be walking across the stage, and so we don't have a lot of time, and we've thought about ways to do this safely, I think we need to, to proceed.
Other questions or discussion?
Yeah?
Yes, member Gately. Member Gately?
Thank you. The, the difference between SLIF students and the Tech students going back on February 8th is that the, from what I'm hearing from my constituents, is the Lynn Tech teachers that are in the shops found out about this on Tuesday, and it was being presented to us on Thursday, so they're taken aback. It's not that they don't want to be with their students, but they want to be with their students safely. So I'm trying to, I need to talk to Carissa, if you don't mind, Mrs., is she still on? Okay, so what would a day look like, safety-wise, for the students, teachers, and staff when they arrive? Are they going to get, have temperatures, you know, like have their temperatures taken when they walk in, when they go in the classroom? Are they going to have masks? Can they have shields, the shields around? You know, those are the things that might alleviate their anxiety, because there is some anxiety with this move, and I, I need to tell you that, there's anxiety, there wasn't enough processing time for people to think, oh, it's time to go back, because they weren't in that list of people to go back early, but I understand the need to have the shops, I understand this, but I'm just like voicing their concerns because I represent them. And that was their concern, it was very quick, got to them unexpectedly, now they have to go back, what's there, what are the shops like, what's the Cubby's Den going to be like? Where is the Cubby's Den, does it have all the materials? Carissa, these are the answers we need to have.
Can I, can I cut the line, Carissa, just really quickly?
Uh, Dr. Tutwiler, go ahead.
Mayor, so, you know, you know, I always appreciate feedback, and I always embrace, you know, when, when people express that they're thinking or feeling a certain way, and I take it seriously. You know, but I'm also careful not to generalize the thoughts and feelings of a couple to, to everybody. So in as much as some folks might have reached out and expressed concern, I'd say there's an equal and opposite sort of response. I'd say there's an equal and opposite sort of response, uh, of, of profound excitement and sort of, uh, you know, finally, uh, kind of feeling, uh, from other staff, uh, who, uh, were, were, were on that call, uh, that I observed and who, who have, uh, expressed so, uh, directly, directly to me. What I would say about, uh, safety, I think, I think most of the staff in this district know that we are awash in PPE. We have thousands of face shields. We have more masks than we know what to do with. Uh, we have, you know, we're, we're, we don't even have places to put all this stuff, uh, right now. If you go down in, in the hallway and look in the school committee right now, there's pallets, uh, of stuff. Uh, ISD has also ordered tons of, of protective, uh, uh, materials. And so, uh, whatever anybody wants, and the same, uh, sort of offer was made to, uh, the other educators who are, uh, gonna be providing in-person services. If you want a gown, you can have a gown. If you want a, a, a face shield, you can have a face shield. If you want a mask, we, we've got hundreds of thousands of them. If you want, there, there, there are gallon containers of, uh, hand sanitizer. There are protocols. And we're adding to this, as you know, um, a, uh, testing protocol, uh, wherein next week we, we will be able to test, uh, any individual who's symptomatic and have a, a result within fifteen, twenty minutes to allow us to more quickly do contact tracing. And we're planning on the twenty-second to proceed with the pooled, testing, which is a surveillance model, which means everyone's get, gets tested regularly. Uh, there are things that can be done to make this happen safely. I would also say, you know, this is two hundred and ten students. Um, the group of students who's invited back, uh, special education students, uh, for next week, was originally, uh, two hundred and thirty, about half or a little more than half of that number, uh, of families have committed to, uh, to actually participating. Some have decided they wanna continue in remote learning, which is, which is okay. Uh, the SLICE students, the grand total was seventy-five. So we're, we're between English and classical. So we're talking about relatively small numbers of students. Uh, we've created, uh, scenarios and thought about ways to do this safely, again, in partnership with the nursing department, with ISD. Um, I mean, th- those, those pieces have been covered substantively. Uh, I'll turn it over to Carissa if you wanna talk about Cubbies.
Sure. So, um, so thank you so much for the feedback. I do appreciate it. And I think it's important to also mention that, um, Lynn Tech has, um, developed plans for an extended period of time with the hopes, um, and this has been communicated pretty consistently at Lynn Tech with the hopes of getting students back in. Uh, because we do recognize that students, it, it, students applied to Lynn Tech for a reason, and that was to become a crafts person in their trade. And the rationale behind this proposal, um, for our seniors is to try to establish where they are, because previously, you know, earlier in the meeting, it was mentioned about a loss of learning. And what we're trying to do is fill that gap right now for our seniors. So the day after graduation, they are safety assessed on the machines and equipment and tools that they will be using out in the field. And also they will, we will hone in on those pertinent skills that we need to refresh them for their trades as they leave us. Um, and that is sort of the rationale behind this. As far as programs like Cubbies Den, as far as programs like Health Tech, um, in cosmetology, where it, it's, there's a human capital there, right? There's that piece where students do need to work on someone or, you know, we have plans in place, um, in order to be able to achieve that in the best simulated experience that we can. Um, whether it's through additional mannequins, whether it's through, um, you know, the first, whether it's through o- other, other venues where we can partner. Um, I think the important piece to remember is this February eighth start. Students are going to be coming in, but, and in every other week model, the first two weeks, which is an entire month, is really going to be understanding where they are safety-wise and getting them back acclimated into their shop experience and getting back acclimated to working with the tools and equipment that they haven't touched in nearly a year. And that's an entire month. Now we're looking at March. And at that point, things may be different and we may, we may be able to evolve. And I think that's what's important about this plan too. Um, is that this ha- this plan has been evolving because the situation that we're in is so dynamic. Um, and this will continue to evolve. Uh, this, for, again, the first month is really going to be around safety and refreshing students and ensuring that they're safe, um, and, and figuring out where they are, assessing the skill sets, um, that we've already given them, um, where that gap may be, filling that gap and thinking about where we need to go next. Um, I have to say with, with conviction and confidence, um, that I believe very clearly, um, and very wholeheartedly that come March, when students are engaged, we will be at a place where we can say, for those human capital sort of shops, we have a very good, strong program. We have a very good, strong plan. Um, and again, the teachers have been part of meetings and conversations around, you know, you know, this is what we're thinking. We're going to do everything we can to get our students back. And right now the focus really just is on the seniors.
Okay, um, Mayor, the other question I was gonna ask, I think I'm muted.
No, we can hear you.
Okay, um, at Lynn Tech gym, when the firefighters got their vaccine, they got it right there in the gym. When and if we do have a, you know, when we finally get the vaccines, could the teachers that are in tech be able to have someone come in and give them theirs while they're working that day? Do you think that will be possible?
Again, it'll, it'll, the, when, when the vaccine is made available for other members of those groups, and again, that's a, a decision that's being made related to what groups are gonna go first and what vaccinations will be available. Uh, when that is, you know, that, that's something we can talk about as the vaccination, um, uh, phases are identified and those groups are allowed to get those vaccinations. So that's, that'll be evolving too over the next, you know, the, the next group starts on, on Monday. Over seventy-five, uh, and there's a number of different, uh, expansion of the, uh, the original group. Uh, and again, that's not a decision that we're making, but we're working within, uh, the parameters of what's been identified as, uh, uh, who to give vaccinations to. And as, as time goes on, there'll be an opportunity, uh, uh, if that's, um, those vaccinations are made available for teachers, which we hope is soon, uh, that we can work through that. Um, as part of, as part of, as part of what I, like I said, will be, will be, will be, uh, over the next day or two, uh, laying out, rolling out a plan for, uh, what the city is doing in conjunction with Lynn Community Health Center to establish, um, um, what we can be in a proactive way in terms of vaccinations from the city's perspective. We wanna be as proactive as possible and we'll be, um, like I said, that information will be coming out, you know, potentially tomorrow.
Thank you. And thank you, Carissa.
Other questions?
Yes, um.
Member Sadoway?
Uh, uh, you know, um, I, I think all of the, uh, current, uh, vaccinations required, uh, two doses. So, you know, that, that pushes us e- even farther along if we're gonna have to wait for, um, uh, for that to be full and complete. Uh, you know, I, I think that, um, the, uh, MOUs that we have with the, the unions currently, um, ob- obviously have, uh, you know, certain, uh, processes and procedures that are required by, uh, Lynn Public Schools to make sure that, uh, the places that we are bringing our teachers or putting our teachers in, uh, are safe and, and obviously that, um, uh, safe not only for the student but for the educator as well. Um, you know, I continue to reiterate, um, Dr. Tutwiler, and I can, uh, tell you that based off of the information that I received regarding the special needs and the, the SLICE students, that, uh, you're taking into consideration, um, you know, my, my issues with certain buildings that we, we, we have. Um, so, you, yeah, it just goes to show that, you know, w- w- when we, when we address our concerns, whether it's from the, the school committee and, um, from the, the unions, i- it's definitely taken into consideration. So, um, you know, obviously if, if anything happens and there needs to be a readjustment or there's certain data that, that, that comes out, um, you know, we'll, we'll take a look at it, just like, you know, every other, uh, you know, entity in the government. You know, right now they're reevaluating jury trials, um, uh, be- because they wanna, you know, analyze certain data. So, uh, I, I'm hopeful that, um, it's gonna be safe, that our educators will, will have what they need, that our students will have what they need. And that, uh, our seniors aren't gonna lose, uh, this vital information that they need. Like, the principal said, it's been the entire year that they haven't been in to, to have these, uh, important, um, hands-on things. And Patrick, if you can go to the previous slide, you'll see, you have almost, I think, twenty-nine students that are in the, the healthcare, care, care field that, um, you know, once they graduate, hopefully thirty-six, uh, health, health techs that, you know, w- 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 will hopefully, you know, benefit from it. Um, and then you have a lot of, uh, first, uh, first responders, uh, uh, people that are, are, are deemed e- essential, uh, in, in, in the current, uh, COVID world. Um, you know, early childhood, auto tech, auto body, all those things are extremely important. So I think that, um, uh, we can't lose sight of that, but obviously we can't also lose sight of the fact that we have responsibilities. And again, I think that, um, uh, based off of what you said, they've been addressed and, uh, they'll continue to be, uh, evaluated and, and you'll come back with us like you have the entire year when things change.
Other questions from members? Uh, don't hear any other questions. There's a motion on the floor from Member Capola.
I'm seconded.
It has been seconded. Um, requires a roll call.
Cassianus?
Yes.
Mr. Capola?
Yes.
Mr. Ford?
Yes.
Mr. Staley?
Hi, yeah.
Yes.
Uh, Mr. Nicholson?
Yes.
Mr. Sadoway?
Yes.
Amy Hammondy?
Yes.
Yes.
Thank you. Next on the, uh, agenda is an update on third quarter plans. Dr. Tutwiler?
Yeah, so, uh, thank you, Mayor. Uh, uh, right before, uh, we talked about, uh, Lynn Tech, uh, I, I had mentioned the proposal that was made in late October, uh, for quarter two. Um, quarter two is, uh, very quickly coming to a close. In that proposal, I said that we would reassess, uh, for quarter three, uh, which begins on February eighth. And so, uh, at this point, uh, we feel like we're in a place where we can make a recommendation for, for that quarter. Um, and a- as always, I wanna start with our philosophical foundation. This is what sort of grounds us in our decision-making. Uh, by way of reminder, we wanna start with the, uh, or tend to first, the hierarchy of need, food security, housing, stability. Uh, a close second is creating the optimal learning, uh, for students, an optimal learning scenario, uh, for students. One second here. Uh, and, um, we also wanna make sure that we're, uh, communicating clearly and frequently, uh, with, with, with families. Uh, in our, that October meeting, I also, we added, uh, an additional, uh, foundational, uh, piece or element. Uh, and that was through our lived experience, the first, um, you know, month and a half of the school year. Uh, and that involves providing the appropriate supports, uh, for students whose needs we struggle to meet the most. Uh, we continue to stand on this philosophy in the context of change. Uh, this is, uh, a not-so-new metric. It's been out for, for quite a bit. Uh, but it's been the guide since early November for determining the degree of risk involved with potential transmission. Uh, it's no secret that our community, uh, has continued, uh, to be in the red category since the develop, development of any color-coded metric, uh, in the state. Um, as you can see here, uh, in the highlighted row, our community exceeds the average daily threshold as well as that for the percent positive, uh, to be in the red category. Uh, there's no category beyond red, but suffice to say that, uh, we're well beyond, uh, the threshold identified for the designation of that category. Uh, our continued, community continues to experience high positive rates. However, uh, there is a downward trend, uh, albeit slight. Uh, and the latest data which came out today at five P M, again, shows, uh, a noteworthy, I wouldn't call it signi- significant, but noteworthy, uh, drop in the, uh, percent positive as well as the, uh, average positive tests, uh, on a fourteen-day look back. Um, at this point, uh, school districts are still referring to, uh, the guidance on this slide as it remains the latest from the Department of Elementary and Secondary Education. Uh, regardless of where a school falls, um, or a school community falls on the color-coded metric, the expectation is that there's in-person learning happening, uh, with specific attention to high-need students. Even in communities, um, falling into the red, there's an expectation of, uh, hybrid learning, uh, except in, uh, when the red designation is due to on-campus, uh, transmissions or significant outbreaks, uh, in the community. As I've said, I mean, you've seen this slide many times. Um, we continue to plan our, uh, this school year, uh, by the quarter. Um, there continues to be unpredictability, uh, you know, shifts in guidance, you know, evolved understanding. Uh, so we've, you know, been really strategic and intentional about keeping our planning just to a quarter, uh, of the year at the, at a time. Uh, we believe that planning beyond that will only create a scenario, uh, with a strong likelihood of needing to shift, uh, and thus causing some confusion in the community, which we want to avoid. Uh, given the context of high percentages of positive cases in our community, uh, we are not yet at a point yet to return all students to in-person learning. I'm recommending that the district remain in remote learning during quarter three, which begins, um, uh, February eighth, uh, and ends on April ninth. However, in keeping with the DESI guidance and our philosophical foundation, I'm proposing that we, uh, transition to in-person learning and additional cohort of students whose academic needs we struggle to meet, um, beginning on or after, uh, March first. As we near April ninth, uh, which is the, uh, end of the third quarter, we will reassess for the possibility of returning additional groups of students for in-person learning, uh, beginning April twelfth, which is the first day of the fourth, fourth quarter. Uh, by way of reminder, uh, next week, we've been talking about this a lot this meeting, uh, is a momentous one as we begin to, as we plan to begin offering in-person services for groups of students, first proposed in this space on October twenty-ninth. Also, by way of reminder, I wanna quickly underscore the language used in the philosophical foundation, which is also used in the title of this slide. I wanna make sure that I'm conveying that the challenge here is not these groups of students. It's our ability to meet their needs in the virtual format. The other group beginning in-person services in that first cohort, uh, are students who are identified as having, uh, limited or interrupted formal education or who are relatively new to the district, uh, and who are relatively new to the district. Uh, this group is our, as I mentioned earlier, is, uh, our most at risk for dropping out. Uh, with both groups, remote learning has been an exceptional challenge and we expect that in-person services will more appropriately meet the needs of these groups of students. Uh, when I presented to you, uh, in October, um, I left blank, uh, a section on the slide saying about the program hours. I wanted to make sure, uh, that I shared that with you this evening. Uh, careful thought has been dedicated to developing a plan, uh, that would best fit, uh, students' needs. Each of the programs offers four days of in-person instruction to create a sense of consistency each week. With the exception of the teams program, special education programs will meet in the AMPM cohort for two hours each, uh, in person, uh, each day. Uh, team students and SLICE students will be on site for four more hours, uh, per day, four days per week. Listed here are the programs we intend to invite back for in-person services, leveraging the same schedule as those in the first cohort. It's our intention to evaluate the safety for doing so over the coming weeks with the planned launch of March first. You'll notice that the rationale for prioritizing, uh, this group of students for in-person learning is exactly the same as the previous cohort. Again, the philosophical orientation around prioritizing these students. Again, the philosophical orientation around prioritizing these students. Uh involves our ability to meet their needs. And we believe deeply uh that we'd be better served, they would be better served. Um receiving uh services in person. The final group for whom we propose in-person learning um in quarter three is kindergarten. Uh as is made clear in the rationale section on this slide, kindergarten is a year during which the foundation is built for reading. As you might imagine, this is exceptionally difficult to teach in remote fashion, especially given. That uh for many of our kindergartners, this is in fact their first school experience. We propose that March fifteenth uh at the earliest, we begin in-person learning. Forget for kindergarteners on the same schedule that the cohort one s- special education students. Uh are could would be taught uh beginning next week. That's the A M P M model. Kindergartners are currently in an A M P M model, so we see that. Uh transition uh for them into in-person learning is being uh seamless. Uh safety is our foremost concern. Uh we've already developed uh and practiced many safety protocols. With staff in the building over the course of uh several months. In preparation for the opening of this year, we developed a whole host of D E C required safety protocols. Further, as I mentioned, uh as we were talking about tech, we have uh plenty of personal protective equipment. Uh we've met on numerous occasions with inspectional services to plan down to the most minute detail. Um the program for cleaning and sanitizing. Uh and I also, as I mentioned, um in the previous discussion. Uh I'm pleased to announce that we will be ready uh beginning next week. Uh to provide a rapid test for any individual who's experiencing. Uh symptoms, uh that is a student or staff member. Uh under the Binax Now uh Rapid Test uh Program. That is a program that is free of charge uh to our district. Uh nurses are finalizing the training. We have the supplies in hand. We're ready to go on that. Uh additionally, uh as I mentioned earlier, we uh plan to be prepared to launch. Uh a regular surveillance testing model uh in partnership with an offering from the state. Uh also free of charge for six weeks. Uh the district will incur a cost if we choose to continue beyond that. Uh we suspect that we'll be ready for that beginning of the week of February twenty-second. Uh districts are eligible to begin that program, I believe, February eighth. Uh details around that are still coming out. Uh but again, we've crossed every T, dotted every I. Uh big, big um appreciation for. Uh our nursing department, Kathy McNulty, uh Deb Tanzer, who've been working incredibly hard to both manage. Uh the day-to-day uh needs as it relates to safety and. Uh and health, uh both for uh staff uh and related to uh students. But then also doing uh a lot of paperwork, a lot of calls to make sure that these programs are are up and ready to go. So again, I'm recommending that we remain in ro- remote learning beginning February eighth, the first day of the third quarter. Of the school year. I am proposing that we transition for in-person learning, an additional cohort of students whose needs we struggle to meet the most. On or shortly after uh March first. Uh we are amply prepared for the first cohort and planning is underway for the second. As has been the case uh since last spring, we'll continue to consult with our own nursing department. Uh the health director, uh as well as our uh close partners, Lynn Community Health. To make sure that all of our plans are in keeping with the best advice. Uh in the evolved understanding of the medical community. Uh and then finally, uh we we always want to make sure that we're. Uh keeping families abreast of uh what the next step is as early as we possibly can. Um you know, depending on the outcome of this proposal, um a letter will go to families tomorrow. Uh and I'm prepared to do uh another virtual town hall on Tuesday, February twenty-third. At six P M. Happy to answer any questions you might have.
McGaily?
Doctor Tuttwiler, I was just wondering if there's any update on the um on the G B L? The um sports, is it gonna go, is it going to be as we predicted? The start time for the G B L? I know it's not on the agenda, but it's in the third quarter, isn't it?
It 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 is indeed, and so um. Uh if you recall from uh okay, if you recall from that plan, uh the the. Uh it called for a start of practice activities to begin February first. Uh and competition to begin uh the week of March first. Um I have no indication that um that will not happen. Uh I don't think that practices will begin February first. Um I don't think any other G B L schools are beginning practice on February first, at least the ones with whom I've been in touch. Um but I I at this point, I I don't see. Uh any reason why um you know, that plan can't move forward.
Thank you.
Just a follow-up on that, Dr. Tuttwiler. Um I know the G B L uh. Both the uh the mayors of those communities, uh as well as the uh athletic directors have been in discussions. Uh I've talked to uh a couple of the mayors and uh so there'll be ongoing discussions related to what the. Final plans are moving forward. Obviously, there was a huge spike in January across the board, particularly with G B L communities. Uh but that discussion continues and um my understanding is that there'll be. Uh an uh continued meetings to kind of de- determine what will happen related to that, and I think we will. We will definitely be part of that discussion. Uh as those dis- as those um meetings go on related to what the sports will look like moving forward, so. Um I don't have any specifics at this point, but uh like I said, I've been in discussions with a number of mayors, and I know that those discussions continue, so. Um when more information is available, I'll make sure that um all the members of the committee know, from my end as well. Member Sadoway?
Thank you.
And then Member Nicholson?
And 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 just to 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 piggyback off that question, are are we not in need of the Board of Health? Uh approval uh anymore uh for sports to start?
That that will be including the uh Board of Health on those and all of those communities as well, so it's not just the A Ds. Uh and the mayors, uh the the Board of Health are are in in as well as ours will be part of those discussions. Uh and um like I said, as more information comes in, uh would be including the. Uh you know, the director of the Board of Health in Lynn. Uh but in conjunction with discussions related to the full league and what that looks like, what protocols would look like and what other. A Board of Health are um anticipating, so I think that those discussions continue. So it's a good point.
Uh on the rapid test, Dr. Tuttwiler, um w- w- why do why are these ones selected was? Uh are these the one that the state are providing? Um okay. And uh uh my assumption is that the the state has the data to to kind of back up, you know. These rapid tests over other ones, and that's why they they selected those?
Yeah, my understanding, uh you know, I've developed a whole new lexicon. Let me tell you, I'm 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 fancy with these terms, but uh. Uh my understanding is that uh these are ninety-eight percent accurate, uh so so really accurate um. There is a cohort of about a hundred and fifty um schools that. Uh began using this. This was maybe back in November, December. Uh with a with a large degree of success. I've not heard um you know. Uh uh you know, anything sort of bad about people's. Uh experience with it. Uh it's a it's an antigen test. It's not a test to get sent to the lab.
Yeah.
Uh but it's reliable.
Yeah, I I I I had to take one. I I was exposed at one point um and. They they're really quick. I think it was in minutes that we we got the results back and obviously, I I didn't have COVID, so they they were accurate for me. Um uh obviously, um. Uh is. Uh you spoke to the nurses and they're fine with with doing this, because it it's typically not. Um within the purview of 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 a nurse to give like a a flu test, so you know, um. They're fine with 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 doing this aspect.
Doing the the rapid test?
Yes.
Um yes, uh this this has been a a a charge that has been undertaken uh largely by our nursing department.
Okay, obviously.
Pool testing will be, you know, slightly. Uh i- i- is a is a little bit of a different look. Uh you know, students who are of a certain age. And you know, ability will be able to test themselves. Uh but we we've got some time to sort of sweat the details on that.
And 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 is this something that we're gonna be able to um uh kind of mirror? Uh once sports start, because these kids, the 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 students aren't gonna necessarily be in 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 school, but they could still. You know, be, could could still have COVID or 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 be sick. So i- i- it'd be nice to 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 see how this works in in the next couple of weeks and then. Um once sports do start, we can kind of uh have it applicable to uh to those that are participating.
Yeah, we'll 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 have to figure out the details around that, timing and things of that nature. I mean, I see. More applicability with the surveillance testing uh than I do with the uh the Binax. Uh Binax is for folks who are symptomatic, uh and so, um but. Yeah, I mean, I I there there's there's um, there's a use there, for sure.
Thank you. To 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 follow up on that, the pool testing is a big, yeah, big step, big opportunity for the community with the state. Funding of that. I know that Salem and Somerville and other communities have actually pu- uh used that in a very positive way. Which is kind of the model for what's going on and the state fully funding six weeks and will. Will will consider what we can do following the six weeks, but it gives a chance to really monitor. Um and and sports, anybody, anything related to sports would be part of that. Uh and and having it happen in February, I think the timing is appropriate. So I think uh I think Dr. Tuttwiler laid it out pretty well, but I think that's. So people understand it's a really big step to allow us to really kind of understand uh. The non, you know, the asymptomatic cases that may be out there and hopefully indicate. Uh where the where where there are and where there aren't cases. And I want to thank Dr. Tuttwiler and as well on the the nurses and and the team that's put together the proposal. It was uh. Uh laid out to the state for communities that wanted to get into that and. Um we jumped right in uh with the work of the school department, with the superintendent and the staff. And the nurses to say, you know, we want in, uh we're ready to go, and and so they worked really hard to uh. To ensure that we're gonna be part of that program and bring it into the city, which is that really a positive step.
That's all Kathy McNulty. I I don't deserve those things.
Well, well, it's it's good to good to lay it out her. She's done a great job uh putting it together and it's 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 good news. Other questions? Remember, I'm sorry, uh sorry, Member Nicholson. Sorry, missed you.
Thank you, Mayor. Uh thanks for the presentation. So I I just want to say quickly, I want to echo my colleagues on the the frustration about the the vaccine. Prioritization. Um I think that the the if we're considering teachers as essential workers, that that needs to be part of the. Prioritization, particularly for communities like ours that have been so hard-headed as usual. And and I and I know my colleagues feel the same way and have add- added. Uh my name to some of the advocacy efforts around that as well. Um and you know, hopefully. If if that if that gets through and we are able to get that prioritization and and vaccines. Come through, then 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 our plans will reflect that. Like, I think that that would um. Be be a a positive development um if 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 teachers were all able to get vaccinated. Um and I I just wanted to echo ma- the ma- Mayor Vicky about the the testing. I think that's a really exciting development. It's an important. Tool, um and you you, Dr. Tuttwiler, you had that slide about the state's guidance, um that, you know, felt. To me, and I think to to a lot, to a lot of others, a- a- around around this virtual table, um a little a little empty without. Providing uh some of these tools that we're talking about now, um and I think that 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 that's one of them, an important one. Um so so I echo my thanks to to Ms. McNulty and to and to the team, um. The other thing I wanted to ask around the plan, because we're talking about the third quarter, um there's still obviously a lot of students. That aren't gonna have the opportunity to return in person, um. And then when you think of the third quarter, we'll all start to think about the weather improving, hopefully. Um. Has there been any progress on thoughts about how to get? Uh students to have an in-person experience in a situation that's safe. And supervised uh with with a staff that would be willing uh in 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 an outdoor learning environment.
Yeah, I mean, we we've we've, as you might imagine, um the time and attention it takes just to get. Uh you know, next week, um you know, ready to go, and then the time and attention related to. You know, with your approval, that next cohort um is is mind-boggling. But at the same time, we've had high-level conversations about what means some, you know, meaningful in-person experiences. We we can put together when, you know, it's it's safe to do so um for for other students. So we're absolutely beginning those conversations. Um you know, we had a, we had a, you know. Uh a a big Zoom this afternoon with all the students on the inclusivity panels, almost a hundred people. Super, super, you know, high level, high energy. Uh and and you know, I was thrilled to see the students, you know, in this, in that format, engaging the way that they were. But then also wondering, you know, what what would this have been like or look like, you know, were we. You know, able to do something on a smaller scale uh in person, outdoors somewhere. Uh and so. Yeah, absolutely, the 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 thoughts around meaningful in-person uh experiences are are beginning to flow. Um certainly keep the committee abreast of uh things that we're able to come up with.
Thank you, thank you, yeah. Um and then also to 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 uh follow along the conversation we're having about. Athletics, I mean, that's great to hear that that we expect that to to happen as planned and and. Just wanted to echo what you were saying, Mayor, about the coordination. I think um. You know, i- it's important that we're, people are all doing the same thing, and I know that there's some di- different. Uh people are hearing different things about what the cities are doing, so appreciate that the your leadership there, uh Mayor and 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 the and the. The uh A Ds and and sort of coordinating that so that people um are uh are on the same, on the same page. Uh and the last thing I want to say, you know, uh I I I also wanted to. Thank everyone that's contributing to these plans and also the educators that are um gonna be showing up. And uh their 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 bravery and their commitment. Um we, i- 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 it's it's uh. You you, like you said, that that the the there, this is a frontline role that we're asking people to fill and and. Uh it's it's so important to those students and and, you know, I I i- it's it's appreciated that that what people are. What what people are doing, what people have done over the last year in their creativity and resources in order to to allow learning to continue. Um and and what we're asking people to do.
Any other questions? Just a, just a couple of um points, because I I just got some information that I just want to share. Uh the uh the G B L is is working on scheduling a meeting between superintendents, mayors, A Ds and and the health directors. Within the next ten days to review the uh um final approval on starting dates. Um looking at uh what the seasons will look like. Um and I know next week that there's health experts at a meeting with the G B L uh to review the plans that are in place. We're gonna be part of those discussions. So we are, we'll be working with them, um and I think uh. The 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 important piece of this is the communities that we're, and the G B L reflect. Um the demographics in the community as well as the reality on the ground with the COVID nineteen impacts. Most of those communities are, a a number of them had similar, if not uh substantial, you know. We're probably his uh biggest impact of any, but very similar impacts from those leagues, so that'll be ongoing discussion, so I'll, like I said, I'll. Make sure the committee knows as those, those um discussions play out, and I know the A Ds and the will be part of those discussions as well. Any other uh questions, Member Castellanos?
Uh just moving forward, could we possibly prioritize to put that in subcommittee? Just so in terms of just, uh we we if we're gonna have agenda, we gotta get these on the agenda and then in in terms of just. Planning ahead, just so we're just moving transparently so we can keep constituents updated up to date and to make sure that.
Mm-hmm.
That we move um open?
Absolutely. So it's just, it's it's kind of an evolving thing, so that's information I just received. I've been waiting for information, so it wasn't. Uh you know, I actually just got it while we were in the meeting here, so trying to get that information. Again, it's re- related to the the health directors. Again, it's re- related to the, the health direct, there's an eye health director ensuring that, but, uh, um. I think that, like I said, we'll, we'll get that information, I think it's a good point, we'll get that, um, that information that's available, we'll get it on the agenda. Um, any other questions related to, uh, third quarter plans? Next on, any, any other questions? Next on the agenda is, uh, superintendent's contract, oh, Dr. Tutwiler?
Amalte, uh, I think that needs a vote also.
Yes, it does, yep. So, uh, it's really basically the signing of this superintendent's contract that we, um.
No, I think the, the third quarter needs a vote is what he's saying.
Oh, the third quarter needs a vote, okay, thanks for keeping me in line, Dr. Tutwiler. Uh, we need a, there's a motion for the third quarter plans, um, that has proposed, is there a motion to accept?
Motion to accept.
Motion to accept, is there a second? It requires a roll call.
Cassianus?
Yes.
Mr. Capola?
Yes.
Mr. Ford?
Yes.
Miss Gately?
Yes.
Mr. Nicholson?
Yes.
Mr. Sadowite?
Yes.
Mayor McGee?
Yes. Next on the agenda is the signing of the superintendent's contract.
I, I emailed it to, Mr. Mayor.
Yes, so you've, you've e- you've emailed it to all of the members?
Yep, this is the contract that we approved at the last minute, uh, last meeting, I apologize. Um, and, um, this is just the physical document for us to sign, uh, during this meeting.
Okay, so the document should be in everyone's, uh, inbox, uh, and, uh. Uh, John, John Mayo, do you have any, uh, anything to? Do we have to vote to accept it and then sign it?
I, yes, Mayor.
Thank you. But there's a motion. Go ahead, John, I'm sorry.
Vote to accept and execute.
We need a motion to accept and execute the superintendent's contract, which was agreed to at the last meeting, is there a motion to?
Motion to.
So moved.
So moved, is there a second?
Done.
Uh, requires a roll call.
Uh, Mr. Cassianus?
Yes.
Mr. Capola?
Yes.
Mr. Ford?
Yes.
Miss Gately?
Yes.
Mr. Nicholson?
Yes.
Mr. Sadowite?
Yes.
Mayor McGee?
Yes. So now that we have roll called and approved it, the, um.
Dr. Tutwiler, it's in your email too.
I see it.
Michael, did you get mine?
So far, I have John Ford and. Garrett and Brian, not yours, Lorraine, make sure you hit and save afterwards.
Okay. Did you get it?
Let me check, I got, um, Mayor McGee's, Donna, are you gonna be able to sign it? Donut, you're Lorraine, I got yours, Patrick, uh, Dr. Tutwiler.
I don't know how to do it on my phone.
This should be a, a, like a box, um.
Tapping on it. Let me try it again.
Tap that and then it says, share back with Michael.
I tapped it.
I'm very slow on the internet trying it, but, um.
Look, sorry.
I, I intend to sign it, Dr. Tutwiler, if I can ever get the, um, email to come up, okay?
Okay. It's, it's voted on and it's signed by the majority of us, um, uh. Yeah, and, you know, we can obviously wait for Donna to, to sign it later on tonight if need be. Um, and I'll send a copy to, to you and to Mary, uh, Dr. Tutwiler.
Sounds good.
Okay.
And did you get mine yet, Mike?
I'm gonna check again, one second.
Thank you.
No.
I'll just have to do it online.
Okay, that's fine. Uh, it, it says that you're, you're currently modifying it, so I'm gonna, I'm gonna take it back from you, okay?
Okay.
Okay, Mr. Mayor, now we know, we're gonna just wait for, um, uh, I'm gonna wait till later on for Lorraine and, and Donna to do it on the computer. And I'll, to, um, Mary and to Patrick.
Okay. Let's, um, with, with the knowledge that everyone will sign it, then it's just a technical, uh, at this point to get it done. Um, we can go on to, there's a couple of more agenda items, we, uh. Uh, building and grounds, subcommittee was tabled for the next meeting, that's correct?
Yep.
Uh, and, um, any votes that were taken at the policy subcommittee meeting on January twenty-first, would, uh, anyone like to speak to that?
All right, no votes.
No votes taken, uh, and then finally on the agenda is communication and information, Dr. Tutwiler.
Yeah, uh, I do have a fairly, uh, fairly lengthy, uh, superintendent's report, which I will invite you to read. Uh, I'll just offer some brief commentary on it, uh.
Okay, great, that'd be good, thank you, doctor.
You, you don't want me to read it, I mean, I.
I'm more than happy to have you read it, or you can. I'll leave it, I'll leave that, I'll leave that to you, Dr. Tutwiler.
I'll go, I'll go with the, the, the brief commentary, so basically what, what, what it does is. Uh, talks about the, uh, celebration, uh, that there are some, you know, even in this meeting in particular, some really. Important things, uh, that have happened that are positive, uh, the appointment of a V F. Uh, the universal screener, uh, the expansion of dual language. Uh, really, really important, uh, and I think, uh, some of the momentous, uh, uh, occasions. But what I go on to say is, um, you know. It, we, we still have attention to the things that, that we know needs, need attention, um. There are still things that need improvement, there are still things that we're working on, um, and we've been leveraging, uh, you know. As we have from the very beginning, our partnerships with, uh, community agencies, obviously our, our parents and guardians are our partners. And really attempting to be responsive, uh, to the feed that, feedback that we're getting, uh, and in the report, uh, I, um. I share a couple of the things that we've gotten some really helpful, constructively critical but helpful. Feedback on and have made some shifts accordingly, one of which, um, I will admit and be vulnerable, uh, is my writing style. Uh, that some folks, it doesn't work for, uh, which is okay, uh, and I actually even got some, uh, feedback on that in a principals meeting today. And so, um, but, you know, that's how I learn and grow and, and, and do a better job, um, you know. Serving the community and, and, and connecting with, uh, the people who I want to. Um, you know, connect with what I'm, I'm saying and writing, and so that's what the superintendent's report is about, there are some good things happening, but we are. Super mindful of the things that aren't working and, and still continuing to work really hard, uh, to improve them.
Thank you, Dr. Tutwiler.
Can I say one other thing?
Yes.
Uh, there's some things in the chat there, and I think the individual who wrote them, uh, are, has left, but. Uh, normally, I, the chat is off, but I'm actually glad that it's there, so in the spirit of, uh, communication and feedback. Uh, I welcome anyone who's watching, who had questions, uh, to reach out directly to me, I'm happy to. Uh, talk about, uh, the things that, you know, came up in the meeting that are on your mind, um, and, you know. I think some of the people in the chat have my email address, so I welcome them to reach out directly.
Thank you, Dr. Tutwiler, uh, is there no other, uh?
Motion to adjourn?
Yes, mem- is a motion to adjourn, is there a second?
Second.
That requires a roll call.
Cassianus?
Yes.
Mr. Ford?
Yes.
Mr. Ford?
Yes.
Mr. Miss Gately?
Yes.
Mr. Nicholson?
Yes.
Sadowite?
Yes.
Mayor McGee?
Yes. Thank you all. Who made the motion, I remember Sadowite did.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you all very much.
He mic'd one. Did you get it, Mike?
Good night.
Good night.
I'll call you, Lorraine.